That was very dramatic. Before we begin tonight's official business, I would like to turn over the meeting to Town Manager John Mandorati.
Good evening, everybody. As mentioned, I'm the Town Manager. I'm very honored to work for all of you and serve this community. And working here is a great place to work, but one thing that's very special about Acton is that the residents and the Select Board and everyone else really supports the employees that work here. And every year, at the Second Night of Town Meeting, we announce the recipients of this very special award. This award is called the Joseph A. Lally Merit Award for Municipal and Public Safety Employees of the Year. The award was named after Joseph Lally, a hardworking community member who did very well and wanted to share his success with others and promote hard work and public service. So we have two recipients of this award this year, and I'll introduce both of them having them come up, and I'd like to give them both a big round of applause, and then we'll have you all get on with the business of town meeting. But first, our first recipient of the award is Detective Doug Mahoney. So Detective Mahoney is being recognized as the Public Safety Employee of the Year by his colleagues for the outstanding work he does in this community. He's worked here since 2012, and he's held many roles within the department. He's currently detective, but he's been a patrol officer, a field training officer, a firearms instructor. He's been part of the Special Services Division, a court prosecutor, criminal investigator, evidence technician, and accreditation manager. So he's worn a lot of hats. And he's known as a dependable source of expertise to his colleagues in return to the community. In 2019, the Acton Police Department took a major step and set a goal to become an accredited department, which is a really, it's a high bar that we're proud that we're able to achieve. But when that happened, Detective Mahoney was part of the accreditation team, and he worked tirelessly to get everything in order to have our first accreditation happen in 2021. And then following that, he's worked since then to have a reaccreditation just this past year, 2024. As I mentioned, this is a point of pride for the department, and it's a point of pride for the community, and I'm very proud of the work that Doug and others have done to do that. So that's one of the many things that he's done to contribute to the police department, and we're proud to have him up here today to recognize him as the Public Safety Employee of the Year. I'll just say a few words, I'll be brief. I know you have a long night ahead of you. Good evening, thank you. I'm honored to receive the Joseph Lally Merit Award from the town, and this recognition means a great deal to me. This award is a reflection of the team around me, and I'm proud to be a part of such a strong and hardworking group. I want to thank a few people. First, I want to thank the men and women that I work with on a daily basis, a lot of them up here tonight. Your hard work, integrity, commitment, and intention to detail are what make our team strong and my accreditation documentation much easier throughout the years. Chief Kogan, thank you for your support and the resources necessary that allowed me to put the time and effort into our accreditation program, as well as my other responsibilities in the department. I also want to thank my beautiful wife for your unwavering support through the years. Love you. Thank you all. Thank you for your service. So our next recipient of the award this year is Marty Abbott. Marty is Municipal Employee of the Year. Marty has worked in this organization since 1999. She's held many roles in a few different departments in Town Hall. For the last 13 years, she's been in the Assessor's Office, and she's been a real asset to that department and also the whole community. She was recently promoted because of her hard work, and she's now the Assessor's Analyst, and she continues to flourish in her role. You know, Marty, she's the type of person that supervisors know, and they feel totally comfortable with what's going on with Marty's there, and if they are off to a meeting, they have 100% confidence that Marty has this. And that's a theme. She's worked for several different supervisors, and they all had the same thoughts. She's got this, I got this under control. Residents, residents come to Town Hall, and they say, "I want to talk to Marty." They don't want to talk to anybody else. It's because she's trusted, and she works hard to help people that need help. In the Assessor's Office, they help seniors, veterans, and other people that need things find resources and relief from taxes that we have, and Marty is an expert at doing that, and she's a valued part of the team, not just in the Assessor's Office, but in Town Hall. So Marty's here with her family, which she enjoys spending time with, and I'm very excited to have her up here to give her the award for Municipal Employee of the Year.
Thank you all. I'll keep it brief, too, because it is a long night for all of you. I couldn't do this without all of my coworkers. You guys are so great. We work so well as a team together. John and Tom, the Select Board, thank you so much for this. It's an honor to receive this award. Most importantly, my family. I couldn't do any of this without you. They support me 100% on really bad days that there's not a lot of, but really good days most of the time. And the citizens, the citizens I absolutely love working with, and I've become so friendly with so many, I can't imagine not doing this for a job. So thank you all again. I really appreciate this, and Acton's a great place to work.
So as a bit of a tradition, we just take a photograph of the two recipients in front of the town, and then we'll do our annual Town Hall selfie. All right, this involves all of you, so, all right, ready? Thank you, I appreciate the time. I know you're all here to do some very important business, but I appreciate you taking time to honor people that worked very hard for you all here in this organization. I turn it back over to the moderator.
I think that is an excellent reminder of why we come and that people are willing to work for us. So we'll begin tonight with three consent articles, 34, 35, 36. Well, first of all, is there anybody here who wasn't here last night? Oh, a few people, great. Okay. So is this your first time at Town Meeting? Couple, a couple, okay. So first, what we will do is take up the three consent articles, which means I will read the title. If two or more people feel there needs to be questions or discussions, call out "hold." Otherwise, we will then vote them together. Mr. Charter moves the town collectively vote on Articles 34 through 36 inclusive as part of the consent calendar. Do I hear a second? And the article titles are Article 34, Affirm Home Rule Petition for Checkout Bag Minimum Article 35, Affirm Home Rule Petition for Public Safety Residency Radius Requirement. Article 36, Acceptance of the Municipal Modernization Act Amendment of 2016. We have held out Article 34, and we have the other two articles, 34, I mean 35 and 36. All who are in favor of Articles 35 and 36, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. Thank you. We'll now return to Article 34. Will the person who felt it needed to be held come forward with your question or comment? Yes, hit the button there. There you go.
Gary Budenek, 10 Mohawk Drive. If I understand the article, if you go to the supermarket, you have to pay 15 cents for a bag if you didn't bring your own bag. That's reasonable, but people use paper bags for other things, too, and the source for paper bags is the supermarket. So if you want a trash bag for the garage, or you want to carry a pie from your house to the neighbor, of course, you need a bag, and you can even buy bags in stores. So we're making a diminished supply of paper bags for people to use every day. I use paper bags every day, so if I understand the article, I couldn't vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
David Black, Central Street. This is a process concern, as I think the previous speaker just mentioned. This has an impact on the day-to-day life of citizens in Acton. It deserves a Town Meeting vote. It should not have been hidden in the consent calendar.
Any other, okay. Microphone four, go ahead.
Yeah, this is part of a pattern, like we're going to be doing the lawn blower thing pretty soon.
Nijan Dater, Winter Drive.
This is part of a pattern of small balling, you know, all these things, nickel-and-diming everybody for unnecessary reasons. There's no good reason that you can do to micromanage this kind of stuff, 15 cents per bag. Most people do use reusable bags, like somebody said, "Sometimes we need an extra plastic bag for a small trash can," or something like that, or some paper bag for whatever. Why does the Select Board need to waste its time on things like this? I mean, it's just crazy stuff.
Microphone two.
Corinne Hogsef, 61 Seminole Road. There are so many exceptions to this rule. It's like, who's going to enforce this? You can still use paper bags for prescription medications, produce, frozen food items to keep that stuff from thawing. There's a list of 10 exceptions here. Again, you're going to make, people could be arguing with the folks at Roach Brothers, and the other thing is like the self-checkout, who's going to enforce that? It's, and I agree with the previous speaker, it's just another intrusion in our lives. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone three.
Miles Fidelman, Old Stone Brook. It just seems to make sense. I mean, we're trying to discourage the use of paper bags. They cost money to the stores. Let them charge, make them charge.
Speaker at microphone four.
Hi, Monica Forrest, Main Street. This is actually the reason I came to Town Meeting, because I feel like every year I live here, I've been here for 15 years, there is something that comes out of this meeting that costs me more money. And I apologize to everyone that I am not as fiscally advantaged as other people must be to live here. However, I feel like this is another example of death by a thousand tax cuts or cost cuts. I am literally, I have two jobs, I have a small business, and I can barely afford to live here. This is one more thing where I understand that people would like to encourage your passions about climate change and other possible things. What I would like to propose to all of my neighbors is maybe we leave that choice, the freedom to make the choice, to bring bags or not bring bags, to the individual person so that they can have the freedom to make that decision based on their individual circumstance, and not mandate that people fiscally invest in other people's passions. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Bruce Conant Jr., Main Street. Just a question having to do with whoever crafted this, is why does the retailer keep the money when it seems like if this is supposed to be an incentive to maybe change behaviors and, you know, maybe have less waste or something like that? It just seems like, oh, well, the more bags they sell, the more money they'll make. So it seems a little counter to me. So can somebody explain that for me?
Does somebody have an answer to that question? Mr. Martin.
Thank you. It costs something for the retailers to implement this, and so they get to keep the money to implement this. That's the rationale, right? It costs them some money to put this together, and so they get to keep the funds.
Okay, and so the deterrent for the rest of us is the cost of the bag, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Speaker at microphone four.
This is Leslie Requene on Wayside Lane. I had a similar concern to the last gentleman who spoke about the retailer keeping the money and the kind of confusing incentives here between the retailer taking that money versus the, you know, the cost of the bags going towards the core concept of environmentalism and sustainability. I understand the point that was made just now around there being a certain cost to implement the program, but perhaps there could be some kind of limit on the total amount gathered by the retailer, and after that point, the dollars go towards the core concept of sustainability instead of continued additional money in the retailer's pocket. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone two.
Trilala Court. So the cost of a plastic bag to the retailer is 1 to 5 cents. If they sell it for 15 cents, that's a profit margin of between 300 and 1,500%. The typical grocery store item sells for a profit margin of less than 5%. This is pretty much the definition of a perverse incentive, where you will end up with individually double-bagged sesame seeds if we allow them to keep the profits. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone one.
Jim Snyder Grant, 18 Half Moon Hill. I wanted to provide a small amount of background here. The Town Meeting had previously banned the use of plastic checkout bags. That law is in effect, has been in effect for a few years. This was an intent to deal with the other half of the equation, which is, wouldn't it be better to have people use checkout, their own bags rather than paper bags? And this idea of allowing the retailers to collect 15 cents for the use of paper bags was passed by this Town Meeting three years ago in 2022. The reason it's back here is because the legislature requires it, since their legislative session ran out, for us to, and they did not refile it. We need to reaffirm the very overwhelmingly positive vote of 2022 in order to take this back to the legislature. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
John Urich, Long Ridge Road. I'm against this for all the reasons that other people have said already, so I'm not going to go down that path. In regards to the 15 cents being kept by the retailer based off of their cost for implementing it, when the deposit bill for cans for carbonated beverages came out, that was not kept by the retailers. And that is a huge impact to the operating costs of retailers, not only because do they have to process the charge for doing so, but they also have to set up a collection system to take everything back that they do. So the idea of letting them keep the money because of the fact that it costs them something to implement it is inherently false. There's history showing that that is not a criteria in which to make that decision.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Carolyn Platt, Newtown Road. Let's not forget, and I'm not just a tree hugger, we're here to save the environment. Bring your reusable bags.
Thank you. Back to microphone four.
Dmitri Shirokov, Main Avenue. I think towns should not micromanage businesses and impose 15 specific numbers, first of all. I think maybe some businesses want to give credit to customers who use their own bags. Maybe some businesses don't want to do it at all. So if towns would tax each bag, then basically businesses have a choice, you know, I pay the tax, I don't care, I don't want to implement this. Some businesses may decide to give credit to customers who use their own bag. Some may decide to charge $1 for the bag, not 15 cents, right? Also, if retailers keep the charge, it costs towns to implement it, it costs towns to enforce it, and we are trying to save money here, right? I am all for recycling bags, I use bags to start fire my wood stove, and I am all for, like, you know, not using my own bags and all this stuff, but I think towns should, first of all, not incur the cost of enforcing this law. And second is not to micromanage businesses and tell them what to do. They need to provide incentive for businesses to, and you can implement like carbon credits kind of schema, you charge tax, and you give rewards to some retailers, basically to run neutral. Town keeps money to enforce it, and the rest is given as reward to good retailers, and you penalize better. Thank you.
Thank you. For the duration of this rain event we're having, could people speak up, make sure you're up close to the microphone? Speaker at microphone three.
Hi, Jim Carey, Guswood Road. I'm voting for this, mainly because it was written just for people like me who have a drawer full of reusable bags in the kitchen, and yet they always stay in the kitchen, and I go to the grocery store without them. It's going to take me about three trips to remember to bring the bags with me, and that's why I'm for this.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Thank you, Jeff Mamlet, Gregory Lane. With all due respect to my environmental colleagues who drafted this, I want to say that, to paraphrase Shakespeare, "This is much ado about very little." I don't want to take away from the effort that's been put into this kind of resolution, but I sincerely believe it's misplaced. We need an awful lot of behavior change across the entire planet, and especially across North America, for us to be able to leave our children with a sustainable planet, a planet that is healthy. We are far away from that. However, as you may have noticed, people have limited patience for change. Behavior change is really hard, and if every time you go to shop, you are reminded of how irritating this particular behavior change is, you're not going to have a lot of enthusiasm for the kinds of behavior changes that we really need to see. So I would like to see us all work on encouraging and educating our fellow residents to do things like move off of natural gas, move off of heating oil to heat our homes, electrify our gas guzzlers. I'm voting no, because I want us to focus on what matters most, and this is not it.
Speaker at microphone one.
Anna Grishkin, Seminole Road. I voted to move this motion.
There's a motion to cut off debate and seconded. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. We will use the clickers. So you should see signal indicator and alternating R and T. You are ready to vote. I think we are ready to vote. This does require a majority to pass. Has everyone voted? Yeah, turn on the mic. Yeah, go ahead.
Could you simply announce the number of clickers that were handed out tonight, like we announced last night, so that we have an idea of when we're done voting in the audience?
It's 265.
Thank you.
And keep in mind, the tellers might be not in the room having them, so it might, and plus, has everyone voted? Who's going to vote? So every vote counts. There we go. Moving onward, we are now on Article 11, Approve Home Rule Petition Related to Acton Ms. Nichol moves the article as printed in the warrant. Is there a second? Do I hear a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, Ms. Nichol.
This is the wrong presentation.
This is not the correct, that wasn't the correct presentation?
Good evening, folks. Welcome and welcome back. Tonight isn't just about library governance, this is about a future where our two libraries move forward together stronger. We stand at a rare moment, after more than a year of listening, debating, working, and finally agreeing. This is the story of two libraries, once distinct, now finding shared purpose. Let me walk you through how we got here. The Citizens Library was gifted to the town in 1962, and a board of trustees was established. No specific powers or authority were set forth in the Town Meeting warrant or the accepted deed. Likewise, neither the Town Charter nor the bylaws grant any specific authority to the trustees. Over the past several years, the two libraries began an effort to work more collaboratively. We began grappling with the question of future staffing and governance of the library in West Acton. In 2023, an attempt was made to define the authority of the Citizens Library Board in another Article 11 brought to Town Meeting. That proposal did not have consensus and was set aside. We regrouped. In early 2024, a new committee was formed, the Citizens Library Governance Advisory Committee, including trustees from both library boards, community members, and staff. Our mission, to find a solution that would protect services, support staff, and ensure the library's state. support staff, and ensure the library stayed open. We explored several options. Reverting to an independent operation, no one supported it. Hand over the library to a nonprofit, not practical. But unification, that had promise. We found that it wasn't just feasible, it was inspiring. It would protect both libraries, amplify staff support, and eliminate redundancies. Since last summer, the two boards began meeting together. What happened next was powerful. We saw understanding grow, decisions got smarter, operations became smoother, the libraries both got stronger. This isn't theory, this is already happening. The Citizens Library trustees have been resolute. Taking advantage of the resources and support of the Memorial Library are vital to the continued success, viability, and potential growth and improvement of the library in West Acton. Yes, some costs went up, like across all town departments. But these investments brought expanded and consistent hours, reliable services, a shift from a part-time to a full-time position, membership in the Minuteman Library Network. These aren't just costs, they're commitments to better service, broader access, and a future-ready library. Operations have been streamlined, realizing many efficiencies and savings. With these changes and increased collaboration with the Memorial Library, the library in West Acton benefits from a deep discount for access to the Minuteman Library Network, discounted book purchasing, and state aid that as a non-certified library, it is unable to access alone. Library patrons are the most important beneficiaries of these improvements. We've heard concerns about honoring the original intent of the benefactor, and we do. A gift was made to the town to keep a struggling library alive. This plan does just that, ensuring Citizens Library not only survives, but thrives. Under this plan, the name, identity, and legacy remain, only now with more tools, more reach, and more sustainability. In deference to the accepted deed, the trustees will continue to be elected at town meeting, and the library will continue to operate under the official name, the Citizens Library Association of West Acton, although colloquially, it is often referred to as the Citizens Library or the West Acton Library. This home rule petition, expanding the number of trustees of the Memorial Library Board from nine to twelve, and specifying that three of the elected trustees will be those elected as Citizens Library trustees, is the first step we need to implement in the plan to combine the two boards. Next, the state legislature must amend the Special Act of eighteen ninety that incorporated the Memorial Library. Finally, the trustees themselves will work together to specify the functioning of the newly combined board in amendments to the trustee bylaws. This proposal is about trust between trustees, staff, and all of you here who care deeply about the libraries. It's about setting down structure so we can lift up services. It's about giving our talented staff the support they deserve and ensuring that in every corner of Acton, library doors stay open, welcoming, and empowering. Town meeting approval of this article will set us on a path to combine the two trustee boards into a single board that will govern the libraries and set down trustee authority. This plan will accomplish what simply continuing to meet jointly cannot. The Citizens Library was a gift to the town. We present you with another gift, a hopeful future for Acton's two treasured libraries and a chance to move forward unified. Let's take this important first step together.
Thank you. We generally don't applaud in general, maybe at the end. Though I love libraries. Finance Committee recommendation on this article.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. After meeting with residents on both sides of the issue for Article eleven, we believe this petition is a fiscally responsible and forward-thinking step. Expanding the Acton Memorial Library Board of Trustees to include Citizens Library trustees reflects the unified operations of the two libraries in practice. From a financial perspective, this integration enables shared resources, improves operational efficiency, and has the potential to lower the cost, sorry, getting an echo, lower the costs per transaction across both branches. We understand some concerns have been raised about the future of the Citizens Library. However, this article does not eliminate or diminish that library. It ensures continued representation and strengthens its role within a consolidated governance structure. This article reflects sound governance, maintains community representation, and supports a more efficient and sustainable library system for Acton. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article eleven.
Thank you. I'll recognize the speaker at microphone one.
Yes, I believe the Finance Committee was a mixed vote on that. I have an amendment.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes, terrifying from Mass App. I move to amend this article as follows, to remove Section two in its entirety. And the reason is, can I speak to the, do I have a second?
So I'll take care of that. So first of all, just so that people know, this would be on page thirty-two. If you have your warrant with you, it's also on the screen ahead. We have a motion to amend Article eleven. Is there a second? There is a second. Go ahead.
The reason is that there are so many volunteers that are old and can't make it, and key supporters want to speak are sick tonight. And there are so many problems with this Article eleven. It's unlawful, and if we remove the original, that Section two, then we erase the impetus for court action regarding Article eleven. It's also confusing to ask the state legislature to make it mandatory for publicly-elected citizens libraries to serve on a different board. I don't believe there's been any time in history where elected library trustees from one library have been forced to serve on another library's board. Passing this amendment would make the article straightforward and address the aims of the select board's plan to resolve matters with AML. And you can resolve the other matters with bylaws after. Passing this amendment would virtually erase the need for the court action, as I said, and it would be less expensive and more lawful approach to being collaborative. Current citizens trustees may want to serve on AML's board, but what about fifty or a hundred years from now? They may not want to. It seems much more collaborative to remove the Citizens Library references from this home rule petition. Thank you.
Does the select board have a recommendation on the amendment? Go ahead.
Removing Section two of this home rule petition would defeat the purpose of combining the two boards. That was recommended by the advisory committee to the select board, reached by consensus, and the select board unanimously approved to move forward. The select board voted five to zero to not recommend this amendment.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
No, Madam Moderator, we do not. We have not huddled on it. We have not commented on it at all.
Thank you. I will take now comments on the amendment that is to delete that section. So does anyone have comments on that? At microphone four, go ahead.
Hi, Lauren Rosenzweig Morton, twenty-sixth Marshall Path. I have been following this process from the beginning. I know that when some of these decisions were made during times of COVID and, you know, subsequently, a lot of people were just healing from that and weren't paying attention, and some changes were made in the structure. And the Board of Selectmen decided to take on finding consensus rather than going ahead with some other ideas that they had. So we heard from the people that love the library, myself included, and they worked really, really hard to find a consensus and to come up with what's written here. And as far as I know, it's really working well. People are working together. What a concept. So I really hope that we vote down this amendment and proceed forward. If people who care about the Citizens Library don't like how things are turning out, they can always bring that to the Board of Selectmen, to the library trustees, and say, we're really concerned, the character isn't staying the same. There's lots of opportunities to, you know, point out anything that's not going well for the community. I think this plan is what people agreed on and what we should vote for. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment on the amendment at microphone four?
Yeah, this is Miles Fedelman, Old Stone Brook. I'm just confused by this amendment because it would seem that this amendment would basically remove any separate governance for the Citizens Library. And so what would be the point in any of this? So that's just a question for clarification.
You may respond.
Article eleven is removing the decision-making for Citizens Library by putting it on board where there are nine Acton Memorial Library trustees and three Citizens Libraries, so the nine will be able to outvote the three. Taking them out of this would allow the Citizens Library to remain as it was intended, to govern Citizens Library on its own. This, the deed never intended Acton Memorial Library to make decisions about Citizens Library. If the deed did intend that, it wouldn't have elected, separate elected Citizens Library trustees. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone four?
Anne Chang, South Acton. The last nine months or so, the two boards have been meeting together in cooperation. And what the petitioner has said about taking the Citizens Library trustees out of the mix with Memorial Library trustees is just not true. They speak up, they talk about everything. And when something that is dealt with, that has, comes up that deals specifically with the trust, with the gift fund of the Citizens Library, only the Citizens Library trustees vote on that. But they do have a chance to talk about programming, books, interact with the staff. It is something that is working, it's something that is a cooperative effort, which we rarely get. And to take this out would just destroy that cooperative effort, which we worked so hard to build.
Speaker, still on the amendment at microphone one.
Hi, I'm Linda Viera, and I'm Graydown Way. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself as an avid user and supporter of libraries and as my role as a Citizen Library Trustee. I was selected one year ago, and at my second library trustee meeting, both boards began to meet together. The change from meeting just with just three citizens trustees to working jointly with the Acton Memorial Trustees was remarkable and significant. We are benefiting from the experience of trustees who have served for many years, and everyone is contributing their expertise and ideas as we work together for the improvement of both libraries. It makes fiscal sense for the libraries to operate under a unified system with the same policies for both, with exceptions if either library has a unique need. I hope we can agree that it is to work together towards making Citizens Library fully handicapped accessible. And it is my belief that this will become a reality sooner if both boards continue to work together. Citizens Library has always been and will be, have a small cozy town feel. But as a branch of Acton Memorial Library, it can offer patrons the service of a big library town, a big town library. Please reject this amendment and vote yes on Article eleven. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three?
Jared Rice, Birch Ridge Road. I have a clarifying question. Section two, as it's written, says that the three new members will be the Citizens Library trustees. They don't cease being Citizens Library trustees just because they're on the main board, correct? They could still meet and discuss issues of the Citizens Library if they wanted to?
That is correct. The Citizens Library trustees who are elected, one each year at the annual town meeting, will continue to be Citizens Library trustees. They will also be Memorial Library trustees.
Okay. In that case, I say defeat the amendment, vote for the original article.
Speaker at microphone four?
Hi, Annie Shannon, Central Street. I'm the current Chair of the Acton, West Acton Citizens Library Trustee. And I just wanted to say with the combining and meeting jointly, I've never felt any pressure or anyone trying to sort of force changes on the Acton, West Acton Library. And one of the things that we're hoping to do here is, you know, if this gets passed and the home rule petition is successful and we have our official joint board, is that we will create a new set of bylaws as a joint board that will spell out what may be, you know, items relegated to the Citizens Library trustees. For example, the gift fund will probably always remain under the jurisdiction of those three trustees. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no others standing, we will vote on the amendment by clicker. We're going to try keeping the voting open for thirty seconds. There we go. Nice. Okay, so voting is now open on the amendment. This is on the amendment to remove that one section. So if you vote yes, that will take that section out. If you vote no, it will leave it as it is. Yes, vote no if you do not want the amendment. Voting is now closed. The amendment clearly fails, and now we will vote on the main motion itself. Yes. Oh, oh, sorry. So now we're back to the main motion. I didn't see anybody standing, so I thought we were good. But we're back to the main motion with all of the sections. Speaker at microphone one.
June Leslie has the presentation and there are slides. Is June here?
You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm June Leslie. Citizens Library, legacy of its original librarian, Claire Hafsgood Nash, a suffragette and first woman lawyer in New England. I represent Citizens Library volunteers fired by the staff, keys taken away. The volunteer service was so important to the community for decades that they were trusted to deliver books to bedridden people. Some people who did this to them bring you Article eleven. Next slide, please. We elect three trustees to govern citizens. The left is what the law calls for, on the right is what Article eleven proposes. The town says they're not trying to control citizens trustees, but Article eleven aims to give memorial trustees the ability to outvote citizens trustees every time. If memorial trustees were meant to govern Citizens Library, the deed would not require separate elected trustees. Next slide, please. If passed, Article eleven would start legal battles and cost taxpayers even more money, complicated, untested, and legally problematic. Two years ago, they tried to convince us the library was a department of the town. Now they are turning to something new, equally unlawful, like a car mechanic replacing parts randomly. Public watchdog lawyers believe Article eleven is unlawful. State legislature power is limited and cannot undo a deed. That's probate court's job. This is so problematic that the Attorney General is involved. The town leaders have taxpayer-funded staff and lawyers to try and do what memorial trustees have wanted to do for decades, control citizens library trustees. Don't let them keep trying. Please vote no. The collaboration is working well. Everyone's happy with joint trustee meetings. Why try and fix what's not broken? Why try and fix what's not broken? Spend the money on repairing buildings, sidewalks, and other things that we actually need to fix. Please honor existing law and let the Citizens Trustees do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three?
George Morton, Marshall Path. I have an observation or a recommendation. When the two boards are combined into a single board, shouldn't it be an odd number as opposed to an even number in case there is an issue that requires a majority vote?
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two. You just turned off. There.
Sorry. Alyssa Nickel, Select Board, School Street. I just wanted to offer a couple of corrections. The Attorney General is not currently involved. Senator Eldridge tells us that because the incorporation happened in 1890, the AG will need to review an amendment to that incorporation if this home rule petition passes, and I've forgotten the other correction.
Speaker at microphone three?
Miriam Lezak, High Street. The previous presenter just made a number of statements that are, at the very least, dubious, or best dubious. The presenter states that Article 11 approach is complicated. It is not. Acton currently has two outstanding home rule petitions. Requesting changes to town laws via a home rule petition is neither complicated nor unusual. Article 11 itself is simple, to increase the number of AML trustees from nine to 12. She also claims that this approach is untested. Again, it is not. The libraries have been working together for several years and have been meeting as a joint board for almost a year. Acton residents have benefited from this relationship, as people have discussed already. Citizens Library runs more smoothly, there are more programs, and some costs are no longer duplicated, which saves the town money. Over the past few years, the libraries have worked closely with town council to make sure that any changes are legally sound. And frankly, I'm not sure where the expensive part comes in, but it really sounds scary. But there's no proof. I'm sorry. And thank you. So when Acton's libraries work together, all of the, all of Acton's library patrons benefit, so please vote yes on Article 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two?
You say that you're not from Acton, but you have asked permission to speak.
Okay, I am not from Acton, but I'm asking permission to speak.
Yes, this was brought to me ahead of time, and I will allow it, but please introduce yourselves.
I was a citizen of Acton for 40 years, but I have since moved. And my name is Nancy Lenacek, formerly from Windsor Avenue, across the street from the library. I am going to read something. This actually came from one of the library volunteers. Is it? Okay, I'm just gonna start. How would you feel if you had dedicated decades of time as a library volunteer for your town and suddenly you were told that you were no longer needed? This happened to Citizens Library volunteers. We were ordered to return our keys immediately. We were fired without any recognition whatsoever of our many hours of serving the people in the town. It became a hardship for those who were homebound and needed assistance with receiving and returning their books. They were left stranded. Then we were told volunteers are not to be trusted to keep information private or to access books off hours anymore, or even to deliver for others going forward. Imagine how this change affected the self-respect of these community volunteers. A little more. We want to bring light on why we continue to have strong concerns for the original intent for this little lending library. We already have a great, large, professionally-run, state-of-the-art library in town, Acton Memorial Library. It's okay to have two types of libraries, one with all professionals and a smaller one which uses volunteers too.
Your time has expired.
One which maintains the charm of a little library while still maintaining some updated services.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Volunteers are the.
Ma'am.
Okay.
We did get the point. Thank you. I'll now move to microphone four.
You say vote no on the article.
It's on? Okay. I'd like to move the previous question. I still haven't.
There is a motion to cut off debate, then moved and seconded. All who are in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. The motion does carry. We'll once again go to the clickers. This does require a majority to pass. We'll once again go for 30 seconds, get them fired up.
We're voting on the main vote.
We are voting on the main motion as originally presented. Voting is now closed.
Clickers aren't, clickers aren't working.
We're having some clickers.
We'll hold voting for 10 more seconds. It's, okay. It is well over, I mean, no, no amount of voting would change. It's too old for.
Yes, I agree with that. Have them raise their hands if their clickers aren't working.
Oh, right. If you could raise your hand so the tellers can come and check your clickers before we get to another one. The motion clearly does pass by a substantial margin. Mr. Martin moves the article as printed in the warrant. Well, Ms. Arsenal moves, actually, my script says Mr. Martin. Ms. Arsenal moves the article as printed in the warrant, authorize real property disposition 13 School Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, requires a two-thirds majority. Ms. Arsenal.
Good evening. For you tonight is, just as the town moderator read, the disposition of 13 School Street. If approved, this would authorize the Select Board to sell the underutilized 34-acre property for reuse by a private entity. This would improve the vitality in the South Acton Village area, new commercial space for small business, needed housing near the commuter rail, and preserves public parking spaces. Selling surplus municipal land reduces maintenance costs and returns the land to the tax rolls. And this would generate a one-time revenue from the sale and the annual tax revenue in the future. 13 School Street is a 34-acre parcel located in this, ooh, point, point three, four, sorry. Acre parcel located in South Acton Village zoning district and the South Acton Historic District. The property has been most recently used as a public parking lot. Town issued a request for proposal, for proposals, an RFP, to solicit interest for reuse of the property along with the vacant municipal building located at 3 School Street. The Select Board approved moving forward with a proposal that creates a mixed-use development and reuses the historic Firehouse Building for a coffee shop or similar use. The proposed sale price is 600K. The Select Board voted unanimously in favor of this article. Here you see, outlined in gold, the actual parcel, the parking lot. And here's a view of the parking lot looking from east to west. And this was a Thursday afternoon, and one of those cars parked there is mine, so it is clearly underutilized.
Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted on this three times, and in all three times, we were split, and I think there's very valid arguments on both sides. We ended up deciding to have no decision on this, but I want to just explain where we were standing on this. One half of us looked at this as a way to develop an area of the town that has been underdeveloped with, with the understanding that there would be a sacrifice of public parking. The other half of us were concerned about losing the parking spaces, especially since there is a more likely need for people to be returning to work and a greater use of the commuter rail lot as we move forward in time as opposed to the last handful of years where people were working more remotely than in the office. So we officially have no stance on this, but we, I think there's very valid arguments on both sides of this. And also, sorry, thank you, Jason, the warrant is 100% inaccurate on our vote, which says it was eight to nothing unanimous. That is not how it was. We were four-four, 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 with one consistent, then two consistent abstains. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a bit of information.
Ms. Arsenal, go ahead.
Just to clarify the usage of the parking lot, it was used heavily by the Acton Congregational Church, which is now no longer in that location. So it, the parking lot really is not getting a lot of use currently.
Thank you. We'll now move to the town meeting members. Speaker at microphone one. You have to hit the button.
Hi, I'm Heather Morton. This is the first time I've spoken at town meeting, and I live on One River Street, so just down the street. While it's true that South Acton Congregational Church is no longer using the parking lot, there's still Exchange Hall where there are events and multiple businesses, plus my understanding is that one of the other lots is sold that will be developed, so there'll be increased housing, and that the proposal that the Select Board has heard involves commercial property. So I, I'm very concerned about the lack of parking, and I was gonna ask if there could be an amendment to, to ensure that there is public parking available. I read the warrant that said the evaluation criteria specifies that highly advantageous proposals shall include some or all of the following, and then it says 10 or more parking spaces, but that doesn't seem to be required. Sorry, I didn't know the history of the Finance Committee, but I, but could there be an amendment to require 10 parking spaces, or is that not possible?
I'll recognize Town Manager.
Good, good evening. The proposal that the Board approved just last week for the redevelopment includes, I believe, six parking spaces for the public preserved, so it currently has a few more than six spaces, but the current proposal that the Board has authorized me to move forward subject to town meeting approving would preserve at least six parking spaces for the public in addition to parking for the development itself.
May I, sorry, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, how many new housing units does that, we don't have any information about this proposal. How many new housing units would that proposal involve, and how many commercial properties?
Not to cut you off in any way, what we're voting on is now just the disposition of the parking space, the, the parking lot. The RF, the proposal to develop is really early in the works, so it's just something that's new on our table.
Speaker at microphone two?
Hi, my name is Katrina Buck, and I live at 18 Faulkner Hill Road in South Acton. I oppose this because last year, this was also in town meeting for some condos that were proposed. There's also a proposal on the table to put in traffic lights in South Acton, to have a coffee shop right in that intersection would be absolutely outrageous. And although the parking lot was empty when you took your photographs at nine o'clock at night, that is not necessarily so. People do use that parking lot. People for Ironwork Farm use that parking lot. So I think, and, and I have no problem with open space. There's a beautiful view of the original, or what we think is one of the original mill buildings for South Acton, which is going to be destroyed when you start putting up condominiums. What is wrong with leaving open space? What is wrong with leaving trees? What is wrong with that? Leave the parking spots for the public. It's not costing us any money. Yes, we're gonna get some tax dollars, but 50 years from now, that view's gonna be gone. Those trees will be gone, and nobody will even remember what it was there. Leave it be.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three?
Thank you. Claire Siska, 14 Stowe Street. So I'm a South Acton resident. I haven't thought a lot about this proposal. I've been leaning towards voting to support it. That section of School Street is, kind of really hasn't had an identity for a long time, and if the parcel, I'm sorry, the number three School Street, I've lived in South Acton for 30 years, and that has been empty for as long as I've lived here. And if, doing something with this property to make it more appealing to do something with three School Street, then it has my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four?
Hi, it's Tarrigan. I'm against this for more practical reasons. The commuters use it, the people who live across the street with very affordable housing that struggle to figure out a place to park use it. There's a church that just, I guess, bought Exchange Hall. I feel like that is like, Katrina said, that that's something we're gonna be really excited to have as open space and owned by the town 50 or 100 years from now, and I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one?
Patty Sutherland of Old Beaverbrook in Acton. I'm speaking on behalf of the Economic Development Committee. So the town maintains a number of older buildings, once used, useful to the community and today left abandoned or rarely used. Properties represent an unnecessary drain on town resources. The warrant presents several possible benefits from the successful sale of these properties, including reduced expenses, increased property tax revenue, community improvement in amenities, and greater access to nearby businesses and the South Acton Commuter Rail Station, which is one of the most boarded stations on the Fitchburg Line. 13 School Street is the site of the first South Acton Railroad Station built in 1845. Tickets were sold there until 1962, and the building was boarded in 1965, burned in a fire in 84 and later demolished. A new train platform was built on Central Street in the 1980s, which was redeveloped and reopened as the commuter rail station we know today, and the town acquired the abandoned lot on School Street in 1990. The underutilized parking lot pairs well with the three-School Street built in 27, 1927, an active fire station until 1961 and later the Acton Defense Building. It's now a surplus building owned and maintained at a cost by the town. Both properties are appropriately zoned within the South Acton Village District for a a variety of mixed-use projects. The sale of three and 13 School Street to a responsible individual, business, or similar entity will breathe in new life into these abandoned and unutilized, underutilized properties and spark further economic development in South Acton. The EDC urges the community to vote yes.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Yeah, hi. Gary Gracy, Faulkner Hill Road. One, I think Tara said that there is another church that moved in across the street, so they are utilizing that parking lot. Two, I was talking to one of the guys that works in the business across the street. I'm also on the board of the trustees for the Ironwork Farm. We were running an event there, and had a long talk with the guy that runs the business across the street, because he says he's been having trouble with people parking. So, I think that the parking lot is something that needs to be considered when we make this decision. And lastly, I've got kind of a question to, I think, the Finance Board, and that would be, how does this differ from the motion that we put aside or didn't pass last year with this same piece of property? Thank you.
I'm not sure who is the appropriate person to answer that question. Mr. Manager, go ahead.
The proposal, the request to Town Meeting is identical, but the proposed development concept that the Board has authorized us to move forward with is much different. I think that was 20-plus units of housing last year, along with a use of the historic building. This is a much smaller scale proposal. It includes a commercial component, which the other one didn't really have. So, I think this is closer to eight units of residential and closer to four units of commercial. So, it's a scaled-down proposal that still needs to go through permitting and all the other things that need to happen, but the initial barrier to having that process start is Town Meeting authorization to have a project move forward. So, it's much different from last year, even though the request to the people tonight is the same request.
Thank you.
Speaker at microphone three.
Hi, Franny Osman, 16 Half Moon Hill. I worked with a working group to promote South Acton, and I believe this body, Town Meeting, voted to support the South Acton vision, which included mixed use, as the Economic Development Committee pointed out. And this is a mixed-use application for it. I find it frustrating when we, and the Planning Department and various committees work so hard to help something come to fruition, and then people vote it down at Town Meeting. Often, I feel misinformed about, or about something about the history of it. I won't, I want to support this. I want to actually request that the town encourage, or somehow, I don't know if you can require it. The last application that we turned down, the ability for the Select Board to sell it, included the builders making the connection for pedestrians underneath the bridge. They were going to work on that. And so, actually, that's a question I have. Is that included in this proposal?
That's not included in this proposal.
It's not. I would encourage conversation with them, because that is a big promoter of access to both sides of the tracks, to get that, both sides of 27. So, anyway, I will be frustrated if we don't support this and see South Acton's vision become a vision.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
David Black, Central Street. I want to start by acknowledging there's a chicken-and-egg problem here, which is the developer is going to be unwilling to invest significant resources in a project that Town Meeting could subsequently turn down. So, I understand the Town Manager's statement that this authorization is needed to move forward. However, it appears that things have developed quite a bit since the warrant was written, as the warrant is written as entertaining proposals, and it is now apparently the case that there is a particular proposal in mind that the Select Board is minded to move forward with. I would request, could the Town Manager share as much as is possible about their proposal we are likely to get implemented if we vote for this article, please?
Is that information available? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity. So, the Board and the Town issued a request for proposals to dispose of the properties at three and 13 School Street. They were due April 18th. We received one proposal that was responsive. We had several entities interested in the project, but one ultimately submitted a proposal that met the requirements of the RFP. The proposal includes preserving and revitalizing the historic firehouse at three-School Street for commercial use, and transforming the underutilized municipal parking lot at 13 School Street into a mixed-use development featuring commercial and residential units, while preserving some of the public space and parking on the existing site. The proposal suggests that a coffee shop or similar type use could be implemented in the old fire station building, and that four ground-floor commercial units could be built with approximately eight residential units above. The price offered for this land was $600,000, and the Board met and discussed this just last week, or maybe the week before, and authorized us to move forward pending our support from Town Meeting. I think, and I failed to mention earlier, one other difference between the proposal last time and this time is the purchase price. It was, I think it was less than $200,000 last time, and this purchase price is $600,000.
I want to thank the Town Manager for informing Town Meeting. I understand that warrant preparation guidelines limit what is possible. It would have been nice if that summary were available as a handout to folks entering the room. Thank you very much. Information's very helpful.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Bob Van Meter, Half Moon Hill. I participated in the South Acton visioning process also, and note that previous speakers have noted the lack of character, economic development in South Acton. I would note that the recent Boston Globe article about best places to live referenced West Acton Village, and a lot of us have seen the revitalization that has occurred in West Acton over the last 15 or 20 years, catalyzed by Village Works and other projects. This is an opportunity for South Acton to begin to become more of a place, to be more attractive for the surrounding community, to be more walkable, to have more economic potential for the community. And I urge support for this article.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
I move the previous question.
There's been a motion and a second to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. The motion carries. We'll go to the clickers. This motion authorized real property disposition at 13 School Street, requires two-thirds majority vote. We will take 45 seconds to vote. And while we're firing up, I do just want to thank everyone for sticking to the time limits and even speaking more concisely than two minutes. I think you are all doing a very good job with that. Okay, voting is now open. Are we having a problem? No? It's just, okay. I can see people pointing. The motion clearly passes by the two-thirds majority required. Now, we get to skip all the way to Article 30, because we took care of that whole bunch last night. Article 30, amend zoning bylaw accessory dwelling units, requires two-thirds majority to pass. Ms. Arsenal moves the article as printed in the warrant. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Arsenal.
I like to keep my things brief. Just a little background. On August 6th, 2024, Governor Healy signed the Affordable Homes Act into law. The historic legislation authorizes $5.16 billion in spending over the next five years, along with nearly 50 policy initiatives, to counter rising housing costs caused by high demand and limited supply. The bill includes unprecedented authorizations in modernizing the state's public housing system. It boosts programs that support first-time homebuyers and homeownership, and resources to build more housing for low-to-moderate-income residents. It also includes many policy changes that will unlock housing production in our state, such as allowing accessory dwelling units, support for the conversion of vacant commercial space to housing, and support for sustainable and green housing initiatives. What is before you this evening is your vote, which will simply align Acton's current ADU bylaw with the state's ADU law. The state's, it mandates consistent regulation of accessory dwelling units statewide. ADUs now allowed by right in all single-family residential zoning districts. Acton's current bylaw requires owner occupancy, one parking space for all ADUs, and design and placement criteria. This article aligns Acton's ADU bylaw with the new state regulations, removes owner occupancy requirements, removes design criteria, removes parking space requirement for lots near the South Acton Rail Station, and allows for ADUs to be built in pre-existing basements, regardless of size. And here are some examples of accessory dwelling units. We have detached, attached, interior upper-level units, interior lower-level units, above-garage units, garage conversions. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends Article 30 to align the town's zoning bylaws with recent amendments to state law.
Yeah, I got it.
Could you just say that again, please?
Did that not come through? Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The Finance Committee recommends Article 30 to align the town's zoning bylaws with recent amendments to state law.
Thank you. Comments from the Town Meeting members? Speaker at microphone three.
Hi, it's Tarrigan. This is more building for wealthy people. ADU costs about in the order of $800,000. However, this allows basements which will allow more housing for people that need housing the most. It also avoids conflicts with state law, which will reduce legal conflicts, so I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Paul Schotler, Summer Street. I had a couple of questions about this article. Let's take a scenario. A couple moves, buys a house in an R2-zoned area, and puts up an ADU, and one of their parents lives in the ADU. Subsequently, that parent passes, and the couple decides to move to California. Can the two units be sold separately, in which case neither would have meet the dimensional lot requirements required in an R2-zone?
I was gonna phone a friend.
Yes, I'll recognize our Town Planner.
Hi, good evening. Kristin Gushard. So, the state law says that you can no longer regulate owner occupancy. So, the lots, if it conformed with zoning, had enough land area to split both units into separate lots. So, you talked about the R2-zoning district. You need 20,000 square feet for each lot, 150 feet of frontage for each lot. If they met that requirement, they could do a plan to divide those lots. If they did not have the required land area and frontage, it would need to remain on the same lot. The individual units could be sold off themselves, but the lot would need to be retained as one.
So, what you're saying is that in that case, you're basically constructing a condominium ownership, where the individual units have individual owners, but they share the common lot?
Correct. That could be pursued.
So, this raises the possibility, then, of multiple condominiums appearing in areas that currently don't provide for condominium development?
Is that a statement or a question?
That's what it appears to me. Is that correct? Would you agree or disagree?
I think I would agree with that statement in some situations, in some locations in town.
Thank you.
Speaker at microphone three.
Yeah, Franny Osman, 16 Half Moon Hill. I remember when I was on the Commission on Disability, we were recognizing these ADUs as really helpful to help keep people in town. And yes, housing tends to be expensive here, but the more housing we build, the more we help the housing crunch. And I'm extremely in favor of opening up the flexibility for people to add more units on their land. So, I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Yeah, hi, Gary Gracy, Faulkner Hill Road. Again, I have another question, and that's, how many units are we talking about per property? Could you have multiple, or is this one per property, or, you know, are there any caps? Can I put, you know, 15 of them in my backyard?
It is one per lot.
Speaker at microphone three.
Peter Chodzinski, 10 Robinwood Road. I am wondering why we even voting on this, since there is a state law? I am wondering why we even voting on this, since there is a state law? Aren't we required to be compliant?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Kristin, it's just aligning our bylaws with the new regulations. I don't know if it, yeah, sure.
I think it helps for consistency to allow the public to better understand what the requirements are. If our zoning bylaw is not consistent with state law, it gets a bit confusing for individuals. And so, this really provides more clarity, transparency, and allows us to effectively implement the law.
So, by default, we need to follow the state law, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Speaker at microphone three.
Roland Willett, Prospect Street. If we don't align, does that mean the town winds up in land court? When somebody wants to build one under the circumstances that the state allows, but our current rules don't?
It just means that Acton zoning bylaw would not be enforceable. So, as zoning--
So, this is purely paperwork? This is window dressing. We voted because it has no effect?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's vote, please.
Speaker at microphone four.
Call the previous question.
All who are in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. This article does require two-thirds majority. We'll take 45 seconds. Get those babies fired up. Okay, voting will begin. Any big issues out there? Okay, I see a couple of people up by the booth. Voting is now closed. The motion clearly passes by the two-thirds required. Article 31, amend zoning bylaw and map open space residential development. There are two motions on this. Motion number one, Ms. Nichol moves Sections A, D, E, H of the article as printed in the warrant. Do I hear a second? Motion number two, Ms. Nichol moves Sections B, C, F, G, I, J, K of the article as printed in the warrant. Do I hear a second? We have the two motions. Ms. Nichol.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If there are any other members of the Habitat for All Working Group, please come on down. Good evening once again. I am the Select Board representative on the Habitat for All Working Group that included a great number of other board and committee volunteers. This article proposes to adopt new zoning regulations that bring together housing and conservation. Given that land is a limited commodity, let's ask ourselves whether we can shift our perspective away from seeing the interest in conservation and the interest in housing as competing, and instead find a way for these two needs to be addressed in tandem. This article removes sections of the zoning bylaw that are no longer needed as well. Resident input has informed the goals and action items in the development of the town's Housing Production Plan, Climate Action Plan, and the recently updated Open Space and Recreation Plan. These plans elevate the desire to leverage residential development in land conservation efforts. For years now, community members have expressed concern about how Acton's residential development is happening. In 2023, the Planning, Conservation, and Sustainability Departments received a grant to address these concerns and explore how Acton can improve its current process for new residential development. Staff formed a diverse working group, many of them standing or sitting here beside me. You can wave when I call your name. James Ficchoni from the Planning Board, Bob Van Meter and Judy Hodge from the Acton Community Housing Corporation, Amy Green from the Conservation Commission, Bettina Abe from the Open Space Committee, Mary Smith from the Green Advisory Board, Holly Ben Joseph from the Design Review Board, Pat Hearn from the Agricultural Commission, and Peter Berry from the Acton Housing Authority. Staff from Planning, Sustainability, and Conservation were also part of the working group. We got started on our work with a community visioning phase and launched a townwide survey that resulted in 430 responses. Over the following year, the town hosted a series of in-person and virtual workshops to gather public input, helping to refine the concept in alignment with the goals outlined in the community's core planning documents. Through community outreach, we heard a clear interest from the public in advancing those goals with three key strategies. Requiring open space protection for all new residential subdivisions, encouraging the construction of smaller homes, and making housing more affordable. We'll outline how each of these goals is addressed with the resulting proposed zoning amendment. The first strategy looks to improve the current rules that guide how new residential developments are built. Under the state's subdivision control law, an applicant is entitled to approval of a subdivision plan by a municipality's planning board, so long as it complies with the rules and regulations and zoning requirements. This image shows Acton's current standard subdivision process, which is typical across Massachusetts. In this scenario, an entire parcel of land is carved up into individual lots, and a road is constructed to access the newly created lots. There is no requirement for any of the land to be protected as open space, and it is common for the majority, if not all, of the parcel to be clear-cut. Although this is Acton's only by-right method for residential development, there is an alternative option allowed through a special permit. On the right is a different method of development called open space residential development. In Acton, we call this Planned Conservation Residential Community, or PCRC for short. This type of development allows the construction of homes on a certain percentage of a parcel of land, while the remainder of the property is set aside as open space. Open space residential development is typically more environmentally friendly as the homes are clustered closer to the street and a large portion of the property is protected for natural resource value. Some of Acton's open space development neighborhoods are listed here. Bellows Farm, Audubon Hill, Half Moon Hill, and Nylander Way, for example. This method has protected more than 628 acres of land since 1991. Given that this has been the most effective tool Acton has at protecting resource land, this article applies the PCRC design standards to all new residential subdivisions. Adopting this amendment would mean that 60% of the land in a residential subdivision must be protected as resource land, and the remaining 40% would be available for development. The dimensional regulations in the existing PCRC bylaw would be applied to the standard subdivision process. The next strategy aims to make it more attractive to build smaller homes. New homes constructed in Acton today range from 5,000 to 8,000 square feet in size. Throughout this planning effort, the community expressed a desire and need for smaller homes. The first approach creates a new rule that lets smaller homes, 3,000 square feet or less, use less land and have smaller setbacks, making it easier to build smaller homes than larger homes. The town's existing zoning has been over-controlling the market for decades by requiring a large amount of land area for each home. Because of this, the only economic option at this time is to construct these 5,000 to 8,000-square-foot, single-family homes. This article does not remove the option for constructing larger homes. It just removes some of the existing barriers to building smaller homes. The last strategy establishes two optional tools for Acton to create 1,500-square-foot, deed-restricted, affordable homes. Both options require at least 10% of the homes to be affordable to and reserved for households with incomes of 80% of the area median income or less. These options provide affordability on two levels. They require 10% of the homes to be deed-restricted affordable, and the remaining 90% of the homes will be more naturally affordable, given the home size is restricted to 1,500 square feet. The first tool establishes a by-right option. This option would allow for up to seven units per acre, so long as 60% resource land area is retained. This option would also allow up to six units in one building. It reduces setbacks and reduces minimum parking requirements, making it feasible to construct smaller, more affordable homes. The second approach establishes a special permit option that would require 80% resource land on a parcel, but allows for multifamily with a maximum of 15 units per acre. It's important to note that the maximum allowable units are often not what is built due to various site limitations, such as wetlands, topography, and soil types. This option would also require enhanced landscaping along the front of the property facing the existing street, as well as an additional screening requirement for abutting properties. The size requirements for the trees at the time of planting are also increased to provide a screening buffer at initial development. Architectural standards are also required. Since 1991, the PCRC bylaw has been the most effective tool for protecting land in Acton, but there is room for improvement. The current bylaw includes several barriers that limited its effectiveness in supporting the town's goals. We can be more effective by utilizing the regulations of the PCRC and making it Acton-standard. Article 31 addresses the goals of Acton's most recent community planning documents by making land conservation a requirement rather than an option. This article also allows for more economically feasible housing options in alignment with the town goals of promoting the development of smaller and more affordable homes. We can use zoning as a tool that leverages housing to advance land conservation efforts and take a bold step toward a more inclusive and sustainable future, where thoughtful development ensures that both people and nature have a place to thrive in Acton. Land conservation advocates and housing advocates have come together as partners responsive to two of Acton's most critical needs.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends Article 31. From a fiscal standpoint, the types of development permitted by right and otherwise encouraged by in Article 31 would likely have a positive impact on town finances. Many sources show that the net fiscal impact of multifamily developments is generally positive, meaning that the tax revenues generated from the additional units would outweigh the associated costs to the town. This is especially true when compared to the net revenue generated from large, single-family homes whose net fiscal impact is more likely to be negative. Given the cost pressures the town is facing, as discussed yesterday in town meeting, modestly denser housing developments that bring in additional tax revenue are a logical step towards strengthening the local tax base and generating positive economic growth in Acton. While there are many factors to consider tonight in discussing Article 31 from a financial perspective, we believe that the overall impact of such developments is likely to be positive. In voting to recommend this article, three members of the Finance Committee voted in favor, three members abstained, and three others were not present during the vote. Some members who did not vote to recommend Article 31 have expressed concern that the town has not conducted any impact analysis of its own to determine the impact of these zoning changes on Acton, particularly in the event of significant increases in unit density or the number of school-aged children. And without such information, enacting zoning changes in Article 31 would be irresponsible. However, a majority of those Finance Committee members present and voting at the meeting where we took up this matter did vote to recommend Article 31, and I deliver that recommendation to town meeting in support of Article 31.
Thank you. The Planning Board's recommendation, please. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm John Capetta, Planning Board Chair. I just wanted to share a few thoughts about this article. Mostly as the chair, and I didn't share exactly what I'm going to be saying with all the members of the group, but basically, I just wanted everyone to know how hard and how very seriously the Planning Board took this article and just the efforts to make this work successfully. Right from the very beginning, the Planning Division has kept us, the Planning Board, up to date with their meetings, offering us to attend, to share ideas, ask questions. So, I just think it's really important that you hear that we took that role very seriously. Knowing that there's no easy solutions, and as folks that have attended any of the Planning Board meetings that I've been the chair of, I say a lot. None of us can predict the future, and no one person, no one person has all the answers. Certainly is a team effort, but I think it's imperative that you knew that we voted to support this. And basically, we even added an extra Planning Board meeting, so we could hear more ideas. And I'm basically just saying, I know there's a lot of debate back and forth, but it is important for you guys to know that the Planning Board voted to support this. Thanks.
Thank you. To the town meeting--
Point of order?
Oh.
There are two amendments that have been submitted. I believe that--
It's not necessarily a point of order.
Oh, sorry. But I mean, before, you said before the comments from the town--
Yes, yes.
Right.
Sorry. So, there is an amendment, at least one. I've lost track, to be honest. There have been so many emails.
Is Richard Keller here? Is he going to, oh, there he is over there. I guess he has one.
Madam Moderator? Oh, okay. We will hear from the Select Board on the main motion.
The zoning bylaw, which trades standard subdivision for cluster development as the only by-right method for residential development, aligns with Select Board goal to discourage single-family construction on large lots. It also adopts inclusionary zoning by providing smaller, indeed restricted, affordable units for increased density, and Acton voters have supported inclusionary zoning on a number of occasions. The board discussed the need for workforce housing to attract and retain a workforce for local government. This open space residential development offers one tool to encourage smaller and more affordable homes for town and school employees, and also for residents who would like to downsize in Acton, and also have their children who grow up in Acton to afford to live here. In addition, an additional benefit to this zoning amendment is stronger protection of open space with the requirement to set aside between 60 and 80% of a parcel that includes high-value natural resources. The Select Board unanimously voted to recommend Article 31.
Thank you. Now, to microphone four.
Well, Richard Kelleher has an amendment. He's over there.
Okay, microphone three?
Patty, can you let him talk?
I'm seeing people waving.
Richard Kelleher, put your arm up.
If, okay. How many amendments are we proposing here? One, two?
I'll let him do it. Two.
Yeah, so if the Speaker at microphone four could wait until I call on you again. Amendment at the front microphone, please. What is your amendment?
Excuse me. Ian Watkins, Strawberry Hill Road, on a point of order.
Yes.
Would it be possible to ask questions about the original proposal and the presentation before moving to amendments? Because otherwise, it's a little bit confusing.
So the, so in reverse, to make it less confusing, we take the amendments, because that could affect what the final thing is. That could change, yeah, change what the motion is. So introduce yourself, and please tell us your, it should be, we should have the text of the amendment. Go ahead, sir. Have to hit the button.
My name is Richard Kelleher. I'm speaking as an individual, but I'm a member of the Design Review Board, and, 46 Brewster Lane. And I'm speaking as an individual, but I am a member of the Design Review Board. And, do I read that? That's the amendment I'm proposing. And-
I'll go ahead and read it, and then you can speak to your, if we have a second.
I-
Wait, we have, I have not made the motion. Cool your jets. Mr. Kelleher moves to amend Article thirty-one as follows. "In order for a leaching field to be in the resource land, the project proponent will be required to demonstrate that locating the leaching field in the non-resource land area of the site is an impossibility. If so demonstrated to the officials having jurisdiction, then the resource land for-"
And the pro-
There's a thing blocking part of the text. "-will be allowed to use no greater than fifteen percent of the resource land for a leaching area." Is there a second? Okay, it has been moved and seconded. This is an amendment to change the original article. Mr. Kelleher, to your amendment.
Well, it seems to me, and to the majority of the members of the DRB, when we passed this recommendation, that to have a resource area that could be taken up largely by a septic field would be no longer very much of a resource area. You imagine, you know, once they're on the resource land, excavating or grading to put in a septic field, it could be quite, liberties could be taken with that to remove a lot of biodiversity, trees, and vegetation in the process. So we want to have some limit on that, what can happen under that scenario.
Thank you. Now I would like to hear what the second amendment is, just so that people will know what the options are. At microphone three.
Evening. Peter Darlow, Two Spring Hill Road, Chair of the Design Review Board. Just want to mention that DRB is very supportive of the goals within Article thirty-one to leave untouched significant portions of the town's natural resource lands, to incentivize the development of smaller-scale residential units, and to potentially incentivize development of affordable housing units. Board members are pleased to have had several opportunities to advise and comment on aspects of the zoning proposal with members of the Planning Division. When the Board met to review the final full draft of the zoning language proposed in Article thirty-one, we did come away with two concerns. You've heard the first concern from Richard. I am speaking to multifamily special permit paragraphs within the incentives for affordability, section five point seven. Though the DRB members are very much in favor of incentivizing the development of affordable housing, we have concerns with paragraphs five point seven point two through five point seven point two through eight, which could allow for the development of larger multifamily buildings at a density as high as fifteen units per acre of the land tract. Please understand that a density of fifteen units an acre is the density allowed in the recently adopted MBTA zoning district in South Acton. The intent of the MBTA overlay zoning district is to promote dwelling density adjacent to public transportation, and to promote greater dwelling density within the South Acton Village District. To date, there have not been any projects constructed with the fifteen dwelling units an acre density in the MBTA. Thus, the positive or negative effects of this dwelling density on the town cannot be assessed. The DRB is concerned that allowing fifteen dwelling units an acre essentially throughout town will dilute the intent of promoting this for the MBTA zoning and the South Acton Village zoning. Therefore, we recommend deletion of paragraph five point seven two through five point seven point two point eight.
Thank you. We will not take a motion at this time, and I really would appreciate letting people make their own things, make their own motions. We can only have one motion at a time, but I wanted people to know what the choices are. So we will do the first motion, but the second motion is to delete the sections, they're on page fifty and fifty-one in your warrant, if you want to check those. But we will now go back to the amendment regarding the leaching field. Does the Select Board have a position?
The Select Board unanimously voted against this amendment.
Finance Committee?
We don't have a position on this amendment.
Thank you. To the town meeting members on the amendment to change the leaching field requirements. Speaker at microphone four?
Yes, could I ask a question about this? I was wondering where the person proposing the amendment came up with the fifteen percent? Was that some kind of, was that used somewhere else, or how did we come up with that number?
Could the proponent respond?
It was just a number that seemed reasonable.
Thank you. Further comments?
Yes, I would like to say that I'm personally quite against this for two reasons. One is the PCRC bylaw has operated well for decades, and it does not have this restriction in it, and actually, very few developments have needed to use the resource land for leaching. And secondly, where resource land is used for leaching, that land is not wasted as resource land. Meadow is actually much more rare than forest here, and meadow supports quite a number of species, especially bird species. So having meadow over the top of a leaching field is an excellent thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three on the amendment.
So when the DRB talked about this, we did actually run some quick calculations based on unit numbers. We tested a few scenarios, and fifteen percent was a number that we came up with that seemed to be reasonable. One of the reasons we feel that going forward, this may become more pertinent, is that if this becomes an as-of-right approach to subdivisions, there will be, there'll be more opportunities to use the resource land for leaching, and therefore, we suspect more creative ways to go about that. We've run into situations in subdivisions where lots are manipulated to work around wetlands. You can imagine a forested piece of land with a large section of wet area in the middle, which could not support a leaching field, but maybe it's at the far end of the site. Now, how do you get there? You have to cut the trees to create a pathway to get to the rear of the site, and then you have to clear the trees, and then create a leaching field. And it's not just the area of the leaching field, it's the area around it to support the construction work. So you're going to end up with a fair amount of what you thought you were protecting, taken down.
Speaker at microphone one?
Ian Watkins, Strawberry Hill Road. I'll ask the question because I think it's in context in relation to the amendment. So background, in our area, we've had several large developments recently with a whole forest taken down. On the other side, we also have open spaces, some of which are in beautiful condition, and some of which are in frankly terrible condition due to invasives like Japanese knotweed, for example. So my question, which isn't clear to me from the whole proposal, is for the open space that is left behind, what is the response, what is the ownership of that space, and what is the responsibility for the condition of that space? And that, I think, is also in context of leaching fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Does somebody have a resp, oh, thank you. Microphone two.
So I can respond to that. It would either stay with the homeowners and their homeowner association, and then they would have a document that spells out maintenance, or it would be gifted to the town, and then the town would be responsible for that open space. Both have been done with PCRCs in the past.
Microphone two, go ahead.
Hi, Alyssa Nickel. I just wanted to offer a couple additional pieces of information about the Select Board's unanimous recommendation against this amendment. While this, there's no objection to having a proponent demonstrate that the leaching field can't be in the developable land or a certain size, Town Council has advised us that this kind of detail should be in the rules and regulations, which is developed by the Planning Board. In addition to Town Council's recommendation, the Select Board feels that those rules and regulations, since they are developed in a public hearing of the Planning Board, that would be a better place for this discussion to happen, because people will get notification of that hearing. And the fifteen percent may be the right number. It might be lower than that or higher than that, depending on an analysis by the planning staff, which has not yet been done.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four?
My name is Terry Maitland, Martin Street. I am Chairman of the Conservation Commission, and for a number of years. Acton has a very powerful bylaw that we administer, and I can tell you that the proposal here put forward in this amendment just would never pass. We wouldn't, I don't think we wouldn't allow it to happen as a part of an order of conditions. And also, when you're talking about land above a septic system in a resource area, it just sounds like some kind of fantasy. So I would, I would definitely, we would pose, I think I can say I'm speaking for the commission, even though we do not, I did not know this was coming, but we would just, we would strongly be against that.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three?
Hi, it's Tergan, and I urge Terry to take a look at the article. It's about forests outside of his jurisdiction. So the leach fields are, the use of the resource land outside of the, outside of what the Conscom protects is what we're trying, I believe, the intent of this amendment is about. The original article came from the working group, and it did not allow any leach fields in the resource areas. So we were quite surprised when we showed up at the public hearing, and suddenly, the whole leach field was allowed to be used for septic, excuse me, leach fields, supporting septic systems, as the DRB people are talking about. So since there is no limitation, and the folks in Town Hall are suggesting you can use the rules and regulations, that's not binding. What's binding is in the zoning bylaw, which, if they can't put a number of houses on it without going into the resource area, because the leach fields are allowed, they wouldn't be able to limit the number of units to protect those resource areas. So I'm very much in favor of this article. Thank you. To protect our water as well. This was something the Acton Water District was talking about, and I hope that you support this amendment. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone one?
Katrina Bug from Faulkner Hill Road. I think that this amendment doesn't go far enough. I know in Carlisle, where Benfield Farm, it's right on the edge of conservation land, and two years after the developer left, guess what? They had a leach field that was going right into an old cranberry bog, and the developer had to come back, threatened with a lawsuit. So I think that new developments that have more than, let's say, six dwellings, maybe they need to be on a sewer instead of a leach field.
Speaker at microphone two?
Michael Vialis, Willow Street. What bothers me is the word impossibility. There's a lot of technologies in septic systems, and some of them are prohibitively expensive. So you could probably, I imagine, that even if you're on ledge, you could build a leach field above that ledge, and you'd have to build the land up. There are other technologies that I think are available. So that word is dangerous in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. New speaker at microphone three? No. I think we are ready to vote on the amendment. Requires a majority to pass. So if you vote yes, that means you want this leach field requirement to be included. If you vote no, you want it to be left out as it is originally not in the article. So let's have forty-five seconds, please. Voting will begin. The motion clearly does fail. Let's go to the second amendment. If I could have a motion on the other amendment, please.
Question? Did he already make the motion?
There was no motion. Can only have one at a time. And, yeah, there we go.
Peter Darlow, Two Spring Hill Road, Chair of Acton Design Review. I make a motion to delete paragraphs five point seven point two through five point seven point two point eight from Article thirty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the article as shown. Are there any comments from the Select Board? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Select Board has decided to not recommend this amendment. The public has expressed a desire for inclusionary zoning on many occasions. In fact, last year, when we were discussing MBTA zoning, it was requested that we- In fact, last year, when we were discussing MBTA zoning, it was requested that we increase the affordable units from a 10% to a 15% requirement or even higher. This amendment removes the inclusionary section only for the special permit, which allows us more control and leaves the inclusionary zoning for the by right. The Select Board also disagrees that this dilutes the impact of the MBTA zoning. That zoning is still in place, allowing for higher density near the South Acton commuter rail station. This would just add to it, not dilute it. This, the Select Board recommended unanimously against this amendment.
Is there a Finance Committee position?
Uh, no, we do not have a position.
Thank you. Are there comments from the town meeting members? Speaker at microphone three?
Uh, yes. There have been no impact studies either for MBTA zoning or this at 15 units an acre. Furthermore, the comparison of square footage, when you can use Section 5.6 at 3,000 square feet, and then the other sections at 1,500, don't seem to make it possible that there's ever going to be any affordable housing. So any of these projects with 15 units an acre, I, I don't, besides the 10% that are required, will probably be at the highest level possible. So people making $80,000, $90,000 a year, is that really affordable? And then the cons, so we enacted MBTA zoning, as was said previously, to concentrate the growth around the T Station. We have yet to see what's going to happen with MBTA zoning. Will it explode when the material costs come down? Dover Heights is already said in a meeting, I know Alyssa, you said you were there, but I was there too, and I heard the, at the Board of Health meeting, that they asked for an extension to the, their requirement to fix their septic system so that they could do the calculations, and whatever they did to that septic system would be capable to, in their words, leveraging MBTA zoning, which is hundreds of acres up at that site. So that's just one site in MBTA zoning. So the rest of this is two-thirds of the town, basically everywhere, so I urge you to vote for this amendment. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone four.
Yes, a couple things. First, this doesn't allow, you know, if, Article 11 does not allow this to happen all over the place. We get one or two subdivisions a year in town, so thi- this would allow occasionally. And second, I consider the main motion here to be a win-win. This amendment removes one of the wins, in my view. The win that we're removing here is the inclusionary zoning is affordable units. We, I, I can't tell you the number of people who speak with me about wanting their parents to afford to live in town, wanting their children to afford to live in the town where they grew up, or those of us who would like to see the staff that works for the town be able to afford to live in the town that they work in. That's not possible with 5,000 to 8,000 square foot houses. So please do not remove these sections from Article 31.
Speaker at microphone two.
Yes, I, I have a question that refers to this amendment and the main amendment. When it's said that affordability is less than 80% of the median income of the area, what is the area?
The area is Boston Metropolitan, and currently 80% area median income for a family of four is about $130,000.
Okay, thank you.
Speaker at microphone two. You have to hit the button.
Bob Van Meter, Half Moon Hill. I strongly support, strongly oppose this amendment. This is one of the aspects of the proposal that goes to creating more affordable housing, and that has been identified as a need in the community, and this is one element of the, of this Article 31 that helps advance that, that goal. So I strongly urge a no vote on this amendment.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Julian Pointer, Avalon Drive. I just want to clarify, because people are saying that this is the same thing as the MBTA zoning. My understanding was that the MBTA zoning was all by right within the zone, and that this higher density portion would be special permit only. Is that correct?
So I didn't hear anyone say that this is the same as MBTA zoning. I did hear that MBTA zoning that was passed last year has not been utilized by any applicants in town. We actually don't have any districts with MBTA zoning at this density of 15 units per acre. The smaller districts near the train station have a density of 10 units per acre, and then the larger districts, Powder Mill Road, there's actually a 40B under construction right now, that's 25 acres, sorry, 25 units per acre, as well as the Dover Heights that was mentioned earlier.
Okay, thank you.
And also, it, yes, MBTA zoning is by right. So this article, not the amendment, but the article, has a by right option, which is seven units per acre, and then the special permit option, which is 15 units per acre. And it's only for inclusionary zoning, those deed-restricted affordable units, and only for the special permit, 1,500 square foot homes.
Speaker at microphone three.
I'd like to move the amendment.
There's, it's been moved and seconded to cut off debate on the amendment? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, previous to me, me not seeing. So, yes, we'll take the final speaker, and then we'll be done with debate. Go ahead. Wait, wait, just, I see your mouth moving, but we can't hear you. Are we good over there? Now try. Go ahead.
Testing? Is that a yes? Yes. Okay. I can't hear anybody very well on your end. Uh, yes, I'm Trish Wendell from Laurel Court, and I have a question regarding this amendment, but also the previous one. I am very curious about if there has been any infrastructure reports done on the electrical, water, sewer availability that would support all this new development that's being discussed. I can tell you that I have actually, the past two summers, I am homebound, and I noticed a lot of things that are interrupted throughout my day, and one of them has been a lot of brownouts and even blackouts, particularly in the summertime when the electrical loads are very high. I actually had Eversource come to my home because I was having some problems, and they expressed to me, the linesman, saying that the current infrastructure is inadequate for all the development that's been going on. And he explained a great deal of things to me at that time. I would like to know, it feels to me like the cart's before the horse with a lot of these proposed developments and proposed changes to zoning, where we may not have services to support them. Has that been done?
Go ahead.
If I may, Madam Moderator, defer to our Planning Director.
Yes.
Um, so that type of analysis would be done by a private developer, similarly as it would be done today with standard subdivision. So we have standard subdivision already today. That type of analysis is done again by the private developer.
Thank you. Now we will move to the vote on the amendment to, to remove that section from the article. If you want to take it out, vote yes. If you want to leave it as it is, vote no. And we will, voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The amendment fails.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Yes, you said you'd give me two minutes with some slides as a con presentation?
When I call on you, yes.
Thank you.
So now we will move to the main article, which is now not amended by either of the offered amendments. It's just as it was originally written. Speaker at microphone one, please.
Hi, I'm Bettina Abe. I've lived on School Street for 30 years. I worked for the town for over 20 years in conservation and McCarthy Town Elementary School. I strongly support the new Habitat for All bylaw. I currently serve on the Land Stewardship Committee, Open Space Committee, and Agricultural Commission. I care a lot about public conservation and strive every day to protect it. Sue Whitcomb and I run the Acton Arboretum Volunteer Program. Please take the public survey found at actonarboretum.org. Needless to say, my friends and colleagues and I are devoted to public open space, trees, wildlife protection, and clean water. And we have been crafting this bylaw for a very long time. There have been multiple public info sessions open to everyone, with awesome public feedback provided and incorporated into the bylaw during the composition process. Bottom line, if we really, truly care about open space and affordable housing, this is a great step to feel good about. We here tonight can be proud that Acton is making open space design by right. And rather than just giving lip service to affordable housing, we can actually do something about it in a very small way, enable a few more people to possibly afford to live in this great town and enjoy its beautiful conservation lands and natural resources together. Please vote yes.
Speaker at microphone two.
Point of order question. You said that the con speech would come immediately after the amendments, and--
Tara, please let me run the meeting. Go ahead.
Uh, in the case of the PCRC, where there is the open space, as opposed to the land, the open space being passed over to the town, what sort of protection is there on that open space for the future not becoming developed? I'm just afraid that someone would use this, get a bunch of the benefits, and then, in a while--
So I think that's a great, great question. We have a handout that was over by the check-in station, and I can refer to the insert. So passing Article 31 is the first step into realizing this change. The next step, if approved, would require a public hearing with the Planning Board to update the subdivision rules and regulations that set forth the design standards that govern how a subdivision is laid out, but it also details the requirements for submission and the requirements for a use restriction of that resource land area. So there would be a use restriction in place stating what can and cannot occur on the land. In the proposed zoning bylaw, it does detail part of that description in a definition.
There is a lot there, I want to make sure I understand. There will be a future meeting, at which point, just further in the process, at which point it will be delineated ideally that that land cannot just be turned around and turned into development.
Correct.
Okay. One more small thing. My understanding is if there is not sufficient water infrastructure that they develop, when the developer looks at the land, that they can simply put a well in, thereby kind of bypassing the fact that there is not actually the infrastructure in our water system. Is that correct? Or do I have it completely wrong?
So there are options to either tie into the Acton Water District. That would be under the Acton Water District's regulations. If someone wanted to do a well, they would need to permit through the Board of Health.
Thank you.
Speaker at microphone three.
Heather Morton, River Street. I just want to thank the board that came up with this, the organization that did. I think it's a fantastic idea, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Speaker at microphone four.
Thank you. I have slides, and I can do it in two minutes if you get the slides up. This is about making sure you know the other side of what the town is telling you, so I will wait until the slides--
You have two minutes.
I know, but the slides aren't up yet.
You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. See the slides at responsiblezoning.org. Article 31, Serious Unanswered Questions. Next slide. Town says cottages, the bottom of this slide is more likely. Big blocks of housing, every neighborhood. Next slide. If this passes, over 400 additional houses will be allowed before we add clustering. Could be thousands. Next slide. MBTA zoning requirements have purchased. Article 39, no, 31, no design requirements. Next slide. If this passes, large blocks of housing allowed in two-thirds of the town. No required affordable housing. Next slide. Larger buildings will be allowed, more land destroyed. Next slide. 22 Elm Street, an example, next to wetlands. Current standard sub, next slide. Current standard subdivision, three homes. Next slide. Special permit, six houses. Next slide. Proposed, 12 houses allowed, no additional land preserved. Next slide. In summary, on the left is what's current standard subdivision. Middle is a special, current special permit. Proposed by right is on the right. Well, we will get cottages or million-dollar condos. Next slide, please. More examples. Next slide. Weston says 0.52 kids per home is a net fiscal loss. Anything larger is a net fiscal loss. Acton has 0.64 kids per home. Next slide. Let's be smart. This addresses no emergency. The state is building three times more housing than needed for population, population increase. The wrong decision could cost Acton millions and thousands of additional trees. When oil companies say wait and study environmentalists, excuse me, when the oil companies say wait and study, environmentalists say ignore them and plow ahead. But this isn't about oil companies. This is about Article 31, harming the environment without any additional really affordable housing. Million-dollar condos, $800,000 condos are not affordable, in my opinion. And so I urge you to vote no on this. Send it back to the drawing table. This, I really appreciate the idea of cluster zoning in certain circumstances, and we could, we could reduce the eight acres to five acres and allow that, but this seems outrageous to allow it basically on every parcel. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
I am Judy Hodge of High Street, and I must speaking as a member of the Acton Community Housing Corporation. The purpose of the Acton Community Housing Corporation is to provide affordable housing opportunities for working families with modest incomes. Therefore, the Acton Community Housing Corporation supports the zoning bylaw being proposed. The by right zoning changes will result in more reasonably priced housing for people of modest means. In addition, the inclusionary options give developers a practical and attractive way to add deed-restricted affordable units to a subdivision. This open space residential development zoning bylaw will help Acton meet more of the housing needs of our community. This open space residential development zoning bylaw will help Acton meet more of the housing needs of our community.
Thank you. I'll recognize Ms. Nickel to make some corrections.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'd like to point out a couple of inaccuracies in the presentation that you just saw. The presentation and the website shown on the screen contained significant inaccuracies that cannot be thoroughly addressed within the limited time available tonight. For instance, the presentation incorrectly states a thirty-eight percent and one-hundred percent increase in allowed dwelling units. Article 31 keeps the same zoning densities so as not to change individuals' land value or expectations of density that the community has previously adopted. The only increase in density is for inclusionary zoning to ensure its viability. For example, the previous speaker erroneously stated a hyperinflated school-age children ratio, citing U.S. Census Bureau as a source, which does not contain public school enrollment data. It appears the number stated was derived by taking the entire population of Acton under eighteen, so that's infants to eighteen years old, and dividing by the total households rather than using public school age enrollment data. Furthermore, Acton is a welcoming community with declining school enrollment, as presented by the school district at town meeting last night. Acton should not violate fair housing law, which includes refraining from making zoning decisions based on trying to exclude families and children.
I'll recognize our remote participant.
Tris Wendell from Laurel Court, Acton. I am requesting a bit of a clarification on this amendment... I'm sorry, this... I'm trying to find out if, in these subdivisions down the road, how do the ADUs apply to these houses and these developments? If they've got an attached garage, are they allowed to then build an ADU above the garage or an ADU in the basements? Will there be deed restrictions on these or a bylaw imposed by the town to limit what the homeowners will be able to do in the future? And I can tell you certainly, I live in a tiny home. It is about eleven hundred square feet. My taxes have nearly escalated in less than seven years to ten... Nearly ten thousand dollars a year. I know the market value of my house. Also, because I was in the construction industry, the average cost per square foot for a basic home to build today is about three-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. That's about one-point-two million dollars for a home. I'd like to understand how these are going to be affordable for the average person on a fixed income or a lower income such as a municipal worker. Thank you.
Do we have her?
So in the previous article where we discussed the state's new bylaw about accessory dwelling units, just kind of mentioning again that they are an accessory use, one is allowed per lot.
Speaker at microphone two?
Hi, Paul Monahan, Piper Road. I have a few questions and appreciate all the work that have gone into developing the language here and want to make sure I'm understanding what is being voted on. In the case of zoning bylaws, and there's multiple bylaws, I know there was talk last year about the MBTA zoning area, is there a precedence in what a developer has to comply with? Or do they have to comply with all zoning bylaws if there was an area that had multiple?
Yes, so anyone that's applying for a subdivision in the town of Acton, as other communities as well in Massachusetts, are required to comply with all other applicable laws. So that includes every section of the zoning bylaw, every section of Acton's local wetland bylaw, Title V health codes. I'm probably forgetting a lot, building code and so forth. But it doesn't negate... These changes don't negate any of that. Everything is still in place, and the requirements set forth in local laws, state law, federal law all still apply.
Does... Do these bylaws pertain only to the subdivision activity or just to development in general if someone were developing a single-family home?
So these... The bylaw set forth in Article 31 is specifically about subdivision and the development for subdivisions. There is something in Massachusetts called A and R, or Approval Not Required, where you have an existing road and you're carving off a new lot off of that existing road, and it has access and frontage. That would not be governed by these new changes that we see. But this bylaw refers you to the existing table that already exists. So there's no changes to those A and R lots.
And then I guess the last two things. Do we have an idea of how many lots in town are candidates for development that would be impacted by these bylaw changes? And then just asking that the presenters clarify, since there are two motions at hand requiring different amounts of votes, for the three items that were presented on, can you clarify which pertain to which parts of the article?
Well, I'll spell that out, yeah.
So for any development, it's really hard to predict that question because oftentimes, one property owner may join up with another property owner and buy some extra land, and then now they have a feasible site. There's not a lot of developable land left in Acton, but what we heard from the community is that they were interested in trying to find a development process and design that was more sustainable, protecting both the ecological resources or natural resources in a way that's different than what we're seeing today, where the byright standard is carving up the entire lot.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three?
Thank you. Jim Carey, Guswood Road. First, I want to thank everybody standing up front because I've been involved in this process as a bystander since October, showing up to play with the Lego blocks and to work through some of the ideas. Really appreciate the transparency and the invitation for us all to join. I love the idea of increasing the amount of conservation space that we set aside automatically and always. A significant number of conservation people write about, "You should just dedicate a quarter of your property to conservation. Don't plant a lawn there. Don't try to garden there. Just keep the invasives out and let the birds and the bugs and the pets..." Or the pets. Possums are pets now. Enjoy those little spaces, and it would add up to a lot. So I love this idea. I love the idea of trying to promote more smaller houses to give us a wider diversity of price points. I know when we built our twenty-six-hundred-square-foot house here in Acton twenty-five years ago, I couldn't imagine living in anything bigger. And now people are building houses three and four times the size of that for single-family homes. Please, no. So I'm much more in favor of this. Thank you.
I see a person with the handheld mic.
Lisa Franklin, Windsor Avenue. Whenever we... The topic of development comes up, I am always torn between the fact that emotionally, I've been living here for thirty-five years, and I don't want Acton to change at all. And all of you who moved in after nineteen ninety-one should just get out of town. However, intellectually, I am aware that many people, from children to seniors, are living against their will in institutions because we do not have enough private housing that is accessible. And if we can create a nice balance between creating more housing that can be accessible so these people can get out of institutions and still have Acton retain its character and be good for the environment, then I really thank you for coming up with a solution that soothes my guilt. Thanks.
Speaker at microphone four?
Called the previous question.
It's been moved and seconded to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay. Thank you. Okay, so there are two motions under this article. The first motion requires a majority. It is letters A, D, E, and H in your warrant. This spells out what the article will do. So the majority is the voting threshold in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five. So to make this pass, that's what the Mass. General Law says. The second motion is to delete those sections, the remaining sections, B, C, F, G, I, and J, and K, which requires a two-thirds vote. Normally, when you get rid of stuff, it takes a bigger, a higher threshold.
Point of order?
Yes.
On motion number two?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think I misread there. I heard you say, "We will be removing those sections," but that's not actually what the motion itself on the screen says. So could you just clarify?
Move sections... But in the language itself, section... So for example, Section B says classification of districts, overlay districts, delete the following lines. So they're removing some of the language from the existing bylaw.
Thank you.
I hope that makes sense to people. The first part is what we're enacting tonight, and the second part gets rid of stuff that needs to be gotten rid of, in the technical terms. That replaces the existing stuff, so you don't have contradictory language. And there were no amendments that passed, so we're just voting on the article as written. So, motion one, which requires the majority, let's open voting. I think we're getting the hang of this. Voting is now closed. The motion clearly passes. Okay, now let's get ready to vote on the second motion. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The motion clearly passes by the two-thirds required. All right. Next item. Article thirty-two, Adopt New General Bylaw, Leaf Blower Control. Requires the majority to pass. Mr. Martin moves the article as printed in the warrant. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Martin.
Hello. Thank you for sticking it out through the second night of our annual town meeting. I'm David Martin from the Select Board, here to present Article thirty-two, which proposes a bylaw to transition away from two-cycle gas-powered leaf blowers. How did we get to this point? Last year, many residents were complaining about noise and pollution associated with gas-powered leaf blowers. The Select Board held a hearing at that time. At last year's annual town meeting, a resident proposed the bylaw through citizens' petition, but there were many amendments, and the matter was referred back to the Select Board. This proposal is the result. Regulation typically limits leaf blowers to seventy-five decibels at fifty feet. However, the noise is an order of magnitude louder for the operator. There is a risk to hearing damage at any level above seventy-five decibels. Personally, I have to close the windows in my house in the heat of the summer to be able to hear an online meeting when my neighbors are using their gas-powered leaf blowers. The biggest pollutants from two-cycle engines are unburned hydrocarbons and smoke. Both can cause cancer, but the particulates in smoke can cause a variety of severe health problems, especially for commercial operators who are exposed for many hours a day. The unburned hydrocarbons are irritants that can cause skin, eye, and lung damage, plus they cause smog. This bylaw would go into effect during 2027. In 2027, two-cycle gas-powered leaf blowers would be prohibited except for the spring and fall cleanup periods of mid-March through the end of May and mid-September through the end of December. Starting in 2028, two-cycle gas-powered leaf blowers would be prohibited at all times. Which departments in town enforce this bylaw is up to the town manager. Also, the town manager can waive the bylaw for cleanup after a hurricane or other severe storm. Enforcement starts with a warning and scales up to three-hundred-dollar fines. Note that four-cycle rolling leaf blowers are not regulated by this bylaw. Battery-electric leaf blowers are easily available, competitively priced, and work as well as gas-powered. Household and commercial models in both handheld and backpack designs are available. Multiple batteries are expensive, but operating costs are an order of magnitude less than gas. Operating costs are so inexpensive that with the savings, landscapers could buy one or two extra batteries each year. Battery-electric leaf blowers require no maintenance, and there's never a problem to get them to start in the spring. They're also silent when not blowing because they don't idle. Landscapers are already adapting to electric equipment. Modern gas-powered pickups often have one-hundred-and-fifteen-volt... Modern gas-powered pickups often have 115-volt outlets for charging while in transit. Outlets on EV pickups work even when parked. Some landscapers claim that they'll need to go out, out of business, or raise fees unless they can use gas-powered leaf blowers. However, the numbers don't justify that. There is a startup cost to switching, but on an ongoing basis, battery electric leaf blowers are not more expensive. Some landscapers use them now, and they're still in business. The operational details are different for home versus business use. At home, if you need only, say, 45 minutes at a time, you can get along with just one battery. If you want continuous operation, you'll need two batteries, charge one while you're using the other. By the way, there's a $30 Mass. Save incentive for buying a battery electric leaf blower. With, with spring and fall cleanup periods, landscapers won't need multiple batteries initially, but eventually, they'll need enough batteries to get through the day. Battery sizes vary a lot, but that may mean three or four battery sets to get through the day, costing maybe $3,000 or $4,000 per leaf blower. However, savings are over $1,000 per year versus gas and oil in operation. Batteries will pay for themselves in several years. As shown here, some manufacturers have tools where you can put in your own assumptions, and, and they'll tell you how much you would save. Many other towns already ban gas-powered leaf blowers. Some do this as part of a noise bylaw, but a noise bylaw is a much bigger deal, typically done by cities and larger towns. It would regulate many more situations and require complex exceptions. This might require the town to hire personnel with special training. So this article would only ban two-cycle leaf blowers, and we know that two-cycle leaf blowers are always too noisy. Article 32 is recommended by the Select Board and the Green Advisory Board. Thank you.
Finance Committee recommendation?
So Article 32 would first limit and ultimately ban the use of all gas-powered leaf blowers for homeowners, the handheld and backpack style, including four-cycle. The Finance Committee recommends a no vote on this article for the following reasons: The environmental benefits of leaf blowers are unclear. Technology is always improving. Gas-powered machines of all sorts are cleaner than they were a generation ago. Electric leaf blowers use electricity, which in New England comes primarily from natural gas. And all rechargeable batteries include materials such as lithium, cobalt, nickel, and manganese, the mining of which causes considerable environmental harm. There is no free lunch. There's no denying that electric leaf blowers lack the power and versatility of gas-powered leaf blowers. It would take longer to clear a yard than it already does, not including the time to recharge batteries unless one has spent a few hundred extra dollars for a spare battery. Battery-powered leaf blowers are heavier than gas-powered, putting additional physical strain on users, making an already unpleasant task even worse. It would be a significant financial burden to the small businesses who use gas-powered leaf blowers, either driving them from town or increasing the cost for their customers. Landscapers who want to provide services in Acton would be forced to replace numerous machines, purchase multiple batteries, and outfit their vehicles to accommodate recharging. A ban would infringe on homeowners' property rights. We don't need the town micromanaging how we handle our, our properties. Repeating a statement I've heard before, Acton is a town, not an HOA. If they can take away one tool, they can take away others. It would only be a matter of time before they come after our snow blowers and our lawnmowers. For these reasons and others, the Finance Committee does not recommend Article 32.
That's sufficient, thank you. We'll not have applause, please. I do want to recognize there's an amendment right behind you. If we could, the gentleman in the blue shirt, if you could bring your amendment forward.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Victor Sun, Beverly Road. So I propose an amendment to Article 32 to delay implementation of all parts of the bylaw by five years. The reason is that, right now, the current environment is a hindrance and imposes high costs for a switch from gas-powered blowers to electric blowers. Right now, there, the current presidential administration has imposed tariffs of up to 80% on foreign-made batteries, and since this country currently imports almost all of the batteries that it uses, that could impose costs of hundreds of dollars on small businesses at this moment to switch from gas to electric. Additionally, battery technology is improving every year. A piece of a battery-operated machine now could be essentially obsolete in five years. So in, for example, in 2015, the average range of an electric vehicle was around 130 miles. In 2020, it was up to 250, and in 2025, it is now up to 300 miles. So forcing businesses and homeowners, including Mr. Martin's neighbor, to purchase a highly expensive battery leaf blower now, which, which would be obsolete in five years, would be an unnecessary high cost. Furthermore, once the next decade rolls around and the current administration is out of power, the, the current, the increased efficiency in both battery and fan technology, combined with lower costs, would make for a much better time to switch from gas to electric. Thank you.
There is a motion to amend the article by delaying implementation of all parts of the bylaw by five years. Is there a second? So let us address now just delaying. So if we do vote the main one down, it would not have an effect, but some people might, if it was delayed by five years, find that acceptable, and we'll find out. So to the delay only, are there any comments? Speaker at microphone one.
So in a couple, past few weeks, five towns on Martha's Vineyard have voted to phase out gas-powered leaf blowers. Washington, DC phased out gas-powered leaf blowers in 2022. Hundreds of towns across the country have already successfully phased out gas-powered leaf blowers. No harm has been done. There is any evidence to, to landscapers. No harm has been done to DPW departments. No harm has been done to all of the others, to residents. However, a great amount of harm has been eliminated, especially to workers who breathe these fumes every day, to DPW department employees who breathe these fumes most days, and to residents and children who breathe these fumes in their neighborhoods. So there is great evidence that it works, it's already happened, and we don't have to wait any longer to have clean air enacted.
Thank you, speaker at microphone two. Really, we don't applaud. When we're done, and if it goes your way, we'll have a applause time. But in the meantime, let's just keep going. It delays the process, let, let people speak, and then I can move on to the next person.
I would just, since you recognize me, I just...
Yes, I have recognized, the speaker at microphone two.
Scott Sullivan, A. Patriots Road. In support of the amendment and delaying, the personal harm to me on this is financial. I have a gas-powered leaf blower, so my cost is to replace that same and equal is $2,000. The cost of gas for me a year is $60. So it's about a 30-year payback period for me to break even on this ability to lower a percentage of a decibel in the town on the sound. Delaying this by five years gets me into a more useful life of my machine. My leaf blower is not brand-new, so by the time we get to five years, I will likely be in a replacement mode on it, and I would obviously have to switch to electric at that time. Being forced to do it earlier would be a financial harm. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker at microphone three.
Andy Platt, 50-year resident of Newtown Road. A very happy employer of my leaf blower. My new electric leaf blower. I can't wait to get home to use it. Seriously, though, this is such a low entry into supporting, look at what we're about. We are about aligning what we do in this town with the Massachusetts climate commitments, with our own Acton climate plan, which we have adopted. Now, I know there's some frightening things going on economically, but I think this is a way to say, "Wait a minute, Mr. Person who lives in the White House, we can have, we can control our own destiny here in a very small way." And you know, I really believe that we can do this and not delay it because there's going to be someone in five years that says, "Well, I just bought a new gas machine, and I want to be able to have another five years." Let's absolutely not delay. We can control our own destiny here. We have a big problem, and this is a small way, and I can't wait. I also have a weed whacker, and by the way, it's cleaner, it's, it is absolutely more powerful. This is a win for everybody. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone four.
Pete Palkus, Nonset Path. I agree with many of the points the person making this amendment proposed. My thing would be, though, the five years. I think hope is not a strategy, and what we need to do is see that the technology gets there, that we have the power and the capability that the gas blowers have today with electric. I have an electric. It's great for cleaning grass off the driveway or something like that, but it won't handle wet leaves, and it won't run for more than 20 minutes, versus the gas blowers have certainly a lot more power. I have a chainsaw as well. It's two-cycle, and it's got a lot of power, and I use that, and I don't plan to buy another one. So I have some electric tools, but I think the amendment makes sense, although I'd like to see the date moved out so the technology is there. Something called the Tarzan Principle: Never let go of one vine till you know the next one will hold your weight. And I think, you know, we ought to look at that with this technology. Electric will be there someday, but it's not there yet. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone one.
Okay, I really hate the loud noise, I want to get rid of the blowers, but I'm okay with delaying for five years if that gives people more time to transition. Bottom line is, at some point, let's get rid of it. And so I'm okay with the five years. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone three.
Hi, this is Leslie Reclean on Wayside Lane. I agree with a lot of the points that have been made already, but in particular, what I wanted to emphasize is in my support of this amendment, by giving a five-year window instead of a one-year window, it allows me to better amortize the investment I've already made in my leaf blower and to budget for the next one, wherever the technology is, wherever our economic environment is, in order to be able to afford the thing that I actually need to get the job done. So I appreciate kind of the extension of having more time. I think also the point that was raised about the very near-term instability due to tariffs and the additional cost of many of these tools in the very near term when this initiative would be enacted, hasn't been factored into many of the materials that were shared around the costs, the comparison between gas and electric, or between what somebody already has and investing in something new. So for those reasons, I would be in support of this amendment.
Speaker at microphone four.
Sharon Sean Gruway, speaking for the Economic Development Committee in Acton. The Econo, the EDC voted once again not to support the amended proposal to ban gas-powered leaf blowers. Although this legislation is modeled after similar measures adopted by neighboring towns, all of which benefit from higher property values, greater business activity, and lower tax rates, it does not align with the efforts to foster a healthy business environment in Acton. The EDC's mission is to support all businesses regardless of size. It is important to recognize that federal legislation is already addressing this issue by offering incentives to encourage a voluntary transition away from gas-powered equipment. Should the town wish to consider additional reasonable measures, such as further restrictions on hours of operation to mitigate early morning or late evening noise, the EDC would welcome that discussion. But it raises the broader discussion here of where will such restrictions, such as these, end. Acton has historically faced significant challenges in attracting and retaining businesses. It is not within the EDC's purview to endorse arbitrary prohibitions, such as banning specific types of equipment by a set date. Should the town contemplate then banning gas-powered snow blowers, prohibit the use of wood-burning fireplaces, restrict outdoor construction, or eliminate mosquito control measures? Acton is a unique community and must focus on practical, balanced strategies to support its hard-working business owners. Gas-powered blowers currently remain legal, and the town currently lacks the authority to prohibit them outright. We respectfully urge the town to carefully consider the potential impact on students with summer jobs, small landscaping businesses, and other local workers who depend on this equipment for their livelihood. We believe all businesses and federal policy should be allowed to guide this transition in a responsible and sustainable manner. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker at microphone one.
Thank you very much. I'm the Reverend Maria UT McCabe. I am not a resident of Acton, and Madam Moderator, I thank you very much for allowing me to speak this, this evening. I'm a Unitarian Universalist minister, and I serve a congregation on the South Coast, and I am here to speak against this amendment and to speak in favor of the bylaw. Because I'm, among other things, not just a minister, but I am a Latina elder. I am from Puerto Rico, and I'm here to represent the voice of many, if not the majority, of landscape workers in this country, who are Latinx, who are my people, who are immigrants to this country, immigrants, by the way, from Latin America, from Latinx countries, occupy the most dangerous jobs in this country, and suffer 61,000 more injuries and 300 more, 300 more fatalities than native born workers. It has been spoken openly, very eloquently, about the inconveniences to homeowners who own gas-blown leaf blowers. I want to speak to you of the experience of folks who, right now, are too frightened to come forward because of immigration policy in this nation. As you know, I said I'm a Latin, a native speaker of Spanish, I'm from Puerto Rico. I work closely with folks who support immigrant networks, and we have done interviews with people who operate day in and day out for their living to support their families who operate gas-blown leaf blowers. This is what they have told us. Every day when I finish my work, I have no, I am given no equipment, nothing to cover my ears from, from the noise, nothing to cover my nose from what is coming into my body, into my eyes, and into my nose from this equipment. I come home exhausted. Excuse me, I'm still talking.
Hey, stop, right now, please. I have just said, your time has expired. Finish up your sentence, and we'll move on. This isn't the way motions work at town meetings. I thank you for your comments, but please finish your sentence.
Okay, so now I'm confused. 44 seconds or 10 seconds? What is it? I'm over. I'm sorry about that. My eyes are so red, and when I go to the clinic from toxins that are coming from my machine, I can't get care because no insurance will cover it. I suggest we also think about people, not just money.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Jared Rice, Berchridge Road. I wanted to ask a point of clarification of the way the amendment is worded. I think... I think, by my understanding, this delays the dates in the amendment, or the initial article by five years, which would put implementation in 2032. Is that correct?
Is that your calculation?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Yes.
Okay. In that case, I would strongly suggest everybody vote down this amendment. I have a leaf blower at home that's electric. It works great, moves wet leaves, no problems. It's inevitable, given that other towns and surrounding us are enacting these legislations, that landscapers will have to adopt this technology to serve their customers. I don't see why they should be allowed to bring their dirty leaf blowers to us and not use them with our neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four?
Yes, Judith Ernst, Gregory Lane, Acton. Just a couple of comments about the amendment. One is that there already is a delay of two and a half years, so that's plenty of time. If we allow this five-year delay, then people will buy between now and then something, and probably gas, and then they're left with something that we really don't want to have. The other thing is that there are two different, at least two different kinds of blowers, one that's more of a residential and the other that's a commercial, and they may be different. And in California, these kind of small engines in 2020, such as leaf blowers, overtook automobiles to become the number-one source of pollution. That's all. Thank you. I would not vote for this amendment.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two?
Okay. I've got a comment on this, but would it be possible to propose an amendment to exempt property owners? Because the discussion seems to have two very different categories.
Can we vote on this?
Oh, yeah, but...
Can we vote on it? Can't, but maybe we can.
Right. You can't, we have to deal with this.
I understand, but...
But I think, I'm not sure what the effect of changing it to separate property owners and business owners.
But as far as the process, someone could propose that before we vote on the main amendment.
But if that's what you want to do, I suggest...
No, no, I've been just standing here too long. I have a comment on this, and I'll...
Oh, okay.
Okay. So there's also a, I looked into this last year, Europe is trying to standardize. The one thing about the batteries, especially for homeowners, is all the different equipment uses different batteries. Europe is trying to standardize. If they do that, then, you know, so I'm sort of saying a delay of some sort is good. So if batteries become more standard, you're not, you know, you can get, replace all your equipment and not be stuck with certain brands.
We have the remote speaker, and you just can't, you can't make a motion just right from your seat. We'll hear from the remote speaker now, I mean, the remote participant.
I think that one of the things I'd just like to make a comment is that I'm a bit opposed on governments mandating private citizens to be forced into doing things that, such as this article. I do agree that with, you know, pushing this out with the amendment by five years, if this were to pass, the main article. That being said, let's get creative. What I did in my neighborhood is I went to my neighbors, and I made a suggestion, hey, let me get three different bids for the neighborhood for a landscaping company. That landscaper comes, does five of our houses in an hour and a half, one day a week, and it's great, because we have very little noise, very little activity. That being said, again, I'm on a very fixed income, I'm disabled suddenly, I cannot work, and I have no means of any income at this point to do anything about that. I did get pricing for landscape companies that could be fully green, and I'm paying currently $53 for one mow to do my whole lawn, the leaf blowing, weed whacking, all that fun stuff. The green company wanted $95. I went to many different companies. So for myself, it's very expensive. It is not within my budget. So to have a town that has already increased my taxes significantly on my property taxes, and then to be imposing paper bags, and now all this other stuff, you're pushing me out of the town, and I can't afford to move anyplace else. So I just would like folks to put themselves in someone else's shoes and really consider this. I love the environment. I agree, you know, with a lot of what folks have said, but primarily, I'm hearing people complaining about noise more than the pollution tonight.
Your time has expired.
And I think there are ways to get around it, if we can plan a little bit better in our communities on our own. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone two?
Yeah, I'd like to propose a motion to put this to a vote, the amendment here.
Yes. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to vote on the amendment to delay implementation of all parts of the bylaw by five years. Did I miss calling, taking a vote on? All who are in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Now it is time to vote on the amendment to delay by five years. Voting is now closed. That motion fails. So let me just take a quick poll here. So we have a possibility of an amendment to delay by one year, but I also have the sense of the meeting that people are not in favor of this article. If I were to ask you, are you ready to vote now? Are people, and I'm not saying I'm not going to take discussion, but I'm just wondering, how many people think you are ready to vote? Okay, a lot of people. Let's take, I just feel like spending the time on the one-year delay, I feel like people are going to vote no. Am I? Like, or is it? Okay. I just, I just want to make efficient use of people's time. So I will hear, there is another amendment being proposed.
I can be very brief. Same thing, one year.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
It's been moved and seconded to delay implementation by one year to 2028.
Move the previous question.
Is there a second?
Second.
All who are in favor of voting on the amendment to delay by one year, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will now vote on the, to delay by one year. Voting is now closed. That motion does pass to delay by one year. So that is now added to the main motion. We'll go back to the main motion of the bylaw change, or the bylaw implementation. Speaker at microphone three?
Yes, Brian Head, Estorbrook Road. So first off, I want to, do we believe in freedom? Is this a free country? Because if it is, the local government should not be trying to deprive me of my right to clean up my own leaves in the manner of my choosing. That's not right. Secondly, yes, leaf blowers are noisy, but so are chainsaws and stump grinders and wood chippers and snow plows and snow blowers. It's part of living here. Pollution, lithium mining is horrendously bad for the environment, horrendously bad. So is cobalt mining. And in what world is it environmentally friendly to force people to take leaf blowers they already own and throw them in landfills and buy new electric leaf blowers? And don't forget the humanitarian side of this. The cobalt that goes in these batteries is sourced in the Congo, 84%, under mining conditions that are appallingly bad. Children as young as six years old are digging up toxic cobalts with their bare hands. Some of them are maimed for life. So you can have an affordable lithium battery. If not using two-stroke leaf blowers is important to you, then pick up a rake and go over to your neighbor's house and clean up their leaves for them. That is the honorable and noble thing to do. It is shameful to deprive your neighbor of using a leaf blower that he already owns. That is not right. Vote no on this. Respect freedom. Respect human rights. Don't further the humanitarian tragedy of cobalt mining. Vote no. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone four?
Hi, Chad Gould, 24 Wood Lane. Good evening, Madam Moderator, town meeting members, and fellow residents. I'm here tonight to express my concern about the proposed ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. While I support the goals of reducing noise and improving air quality, after speaking with several friends in towns that have passed similar bans, I believe that this ban is not the right approach for Acton. For many local landscapers, small businesses, and even homeowners like myself, who do my own fall cleanup, gas-powered leaf blowers are essential tools, especially if you have to admit to a large-size yard. They are powerful, reliable, and capable of running for long hours, especially important during peak cleanup seasons. The electric alternatives, while improving, still fall short in runtime and effectiveness, particularly for larger properties or commercial jobs. A good backpack leaf blower can push in excess of 900 cubic feet of air per minute, while an electric battery-powered model would be lucky to get half that. More importantly, this ban would hit small, often family-run landscaping businesses the hardest. Many of these folks live paycheck to paycheck, and the cost of replacing equipment, buying backup batteries, and modifying workflows would be a significant burden, especially if the transition is mandated without any type of financial considerations. Let's also remember, not all gas blowers are the same. Newer models are cleaner and quieter than ever before. Instead of an outright ban, why not consider a more balanced path, such as a more phased transition that will continue to allow them at peak cleanup periods indefinitely, noise limit enforcement during certain hours of the day or days of the week, or incentive programs to help businesses make the switch voluntarily? This is a complex issue, and we all care about Acton's environment and quality of life. We must also care about fairness, inclusion, and supporting those who serve our community. I encourage you to vote no on this ban and yes to a smarter, more flexible solution. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two?
Hi, good evening. Peter Foy, 4Balsam Drive, for 40 years, and started cleaning out that yard with brooms and rakes, et cetera, and have evolved over time. I guess first, I'd like to, I would like to thank the Finance Committee for their objective analysis of this and gotten the, taken the emotions out of what has been part of this whole bill coming forward and trying to get people whipped into a frenzy about how leaf blowers are killing us all. And, you know, the bottom line is, if I look at the evolution of technologies in my personal use, and I'd like to state one other thing before I move forward, and that is, you know, I'd like, I'd like the town to get out of my backyard and tell me what to do. Previous speakers talked about my personal liberties. Today, you know, I started out with rakes and brooms, and then there were things with cords on them, you know, and then they went to batteries. So, you know, today, my arsenal of tools, I don't, I don't have any gas-powered hedge trimmers. No, my hedge trimmers are battery-powered. My weed whacker is battery-powered. They can do the job that technology has evolved to do, do the job. I bought an electric chainsaw. You know what? I still have a gas chainsaw when I really need to do a good job, because the electric one can't do everything the gas one can do. I've got, I've got a gas-powered leaf blower that, right now, is 900 cubic feet per minute, and I can, I can stand out there and take care of my yard for the hour and a half that it takes me. The research, I updated this morning, I can get a steel backpack with two batteries on it for $1,800. It will on-low run for 120 minutes, for two hours. We want to get it up to turbo mode, in which it might reach 800 cubic feet per minute, less than my back, my, my gas-powered leaf blower, 25 minutes. 25 minutes is like that. It can't do the job, but when it can do the job, I'll buy it. I will, I'm in the process of life cycling my equipment, and I'll do it then. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one?
It can do the job. Echo Quiet has been in business for 14 years. They use battery-powered leaf blowers. They use battery-powered lawnmowers. They are doing very well. They have more business than they can serve, because there are very few electric landscapers at the moment. They have been using battery-powered leaf blowers since, you know, 14 years ago. They are now much more powerful. They have succeeded, and it's happening across the country. Point two. Many of you aware of the harms of PFAS in your water, but not many are aware of the harms of another P toxin called PM 2.5 that David alluded to in his talk. PM 2.5 stands for particulate matter of 2.5 microns in diameter or smaller. A micron is one millionth of a meter. A human hair is approximately 100 microns thick. PM 2.5 is produced primarily by combustion, especially inefficient two-stroke gas leaf blowers. PM 2.5 is so small that it passes from your lungs into your bloodstream, wreaking havoc on your entire cardiovascular system. An estimated 100,000 people in the U.S. die every year from PM 2.5, and when you use a gas blower in your yard, the PM 2.5 doesn't stay in your yard, it goes into all your neighbors' yards as well. Who will benefit from passing Article 32? Every resident of Acton, every DPW worker, every lawn care worker. Many towns have already passed similar articles, including five towns on Martha's Vineyard in just the past few weeks. Please vote yes on Article 32. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone three?
Deborah, ooh, that was so loud, sorry. Deborah Symes, Concord Road. I'm a co-president of Green Acton, and I stand here to report that the Board of Directors of Green Acton, the community's... of Green Acton, the community's longstanding nonprofit environmental advocacy group, endorses this warrant article. We urge you to vote yes. Gas-powered leaf blowers produce harmful and unreasonable amounts of noise, toxic air pollution, and climate-damaging greenhouse gases. Now really is the time to begin to the transition away from this equipment. Efficient battery-powered leaf blowers are now readily available, including robust professional-grade models. Many nearby towns, as others have said, as well as a hundred cities across the country and the entire state of California, have banned or restricted the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. This bylaw would enable Acton to take similar action on behalf of the health of people and our environment. Passage of this bylaw is consistent with the will of the community as expressed by the twenty-twenty Town Meeting, vote to declare that we in fact are in a climate emergency. We call for your support of this bylaw. Please vote yes to make Acton a quieter, cleaner, and healthier place for us all. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone four.
Bruce Cona, Jr., Main Street. I'm not sure I should be at the con microphone here, but I think overall, I think I am. I certainly appreciate that this is a health issue, and think that it's, you know, there are all sorts of things that have been said that are true about this. What I don't have, or not, not, what I don't have any information on is, A, how many are in town? And B, how many are, what's the payback period for, not the commercial people, but for, for instance, this person that had, you know, thirty years for a payback period? I think that those are, you know, we're making a big deal here, and if this is supposed to be for the collective good, it kind of bothers me that only certain people are going to have to pay for that by having to buy new leaf blowers or having theirs, you know, declared obsolete. If that's the case, then I never, you know, there should be a buyback program. We should all be kicking in and say, yes, if this is for the collective good, then we should be buying these things back. If we don't, the first ad, line in the ad will be, you know, leaf blower for sale, nothing wrong with that, Acton just says, I can't have it. And so you're not getting rid of these things. If you're serious about it, we should be having some way of trying to decouple this thing of the commercial people who can perhaps find a way of working around this here, but forcing people like this poor guy here who's got, you know, thousand-dollar investment here, and he's got a, you know, if you don't have one, fine, it's him, he's the one that's got to pay for, for this, for this bylaw. I just don't think that's really fair. So back to the question, how many, how many things are we talking about here in terms of leaf blowers? Did anybody do any calculations on how this is, even with respect to, let's say, the Town Hall, which, you know, we should be focusing on getting the heat pumps for that, because that would eclipse all this, I bet.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. The question is, has anybody even found out how many people have it in town and done any calculations on what individual leaf blower, not companies, individuals contribute to, to the overall problem?
Do we have a response? I think we do not have a response.
Or, or even the payback period for, not the industrial, but individuals.
Go ahead.
So you can get a handheld leaf blower that puts out seven hundred and fifty CFM for three hundred and thirty dollars at Ace Hardware tomorrow? Yeah, you can.
So what's the payback period?
Well, I, I, I can't.
Plus the extra battery or whatever.
I, I can't tell you what your payback period would be depending on how much you use it, but, anyway, I can just tell you what, what that costs.
So let's just leave it at.
Okay, all right.
There are things out there you may or may not be able to buy at Ace Hardware or Lowe's or Home Depot or wherever. Your mileage will vary.
Just think that should be a little bit more fair, and everybody should kick in if we're going to ask people.
No, it's a fair question, a fair question, but apparently we don't have a good answer. Microphone two.
David Black, Central Street. Moved the previous question.
It has been moved and seconded to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. We will now move to the vote on the question, adopt new general bylaw, leaf blower control requires a majority to pass. Oh, with the amendment to delay it by one year. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The article does pass by a majority. All right, let's continue on with our next article. Article thirty-three, adopt new general bylaw, tree protection bylaw. Mr. Snyder Grant moves the article as printed in the warrant. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Snyder Grant.
Thanks to those of you that have stayed. I appreciate it. This one's much simpler than the previous one. My name's Jim Snyder Grant, I'm on the Select Board. The staff worked on this tree bylaw, and I'm going to explain it to you. This article proposes a new general bylaw called the Tree Clearing Delay Bylaw. This new bylaw would generally prohibit the clearing of one or more acres of forest on private land throughout town unless and until a development permit is issued by the town, for example, for a subdivision approval or a site plan approval. It doesn't outright prohibit clearing, it just requires a project to be permitted first, rather than clearing before getting a regular development permit. It doesn't create a new permit, it doesn't create a new step in the process. The article also establishes the right for the town to charge penalties for noncompliance and assures Acton's tree fund can be used appropriately. What's led to this bylaw? Over the last seven years, the town has adopted several planning documents directing the community to prioritize its natural resources, including evaluating and implementing a more thoughtful approach to the protection of intact forests and other ecosystems. And then next, in twenty-twenty-two, the Town Meeting passed a resolution asking the town to address land and tree clearing limits. In the last few years, there have been at least two incidents where developers cleared entire parcels of trees while still in the middle of obtaining development permits. While many of us in Acton were outraged to see this, there wasn't anything illegal in what they did. This bylaw fixes that. In twenty-twenty-three, the Select Board included in their annual goals to bring tree clearing bylaws to Town Meeting, and so here is one of those bylaws. More details. Some examples of exemptions are agricultural land, or land that has a registered forestry plan that includes clearing land, or diseased or blighted trees, or certain emergency situations. The enforcement penalties require either some tree replacement on the lot, or a lot immediately adjacent, or pay fines, or some combination. And now the next slide has some math to explain the penalties. I apologize in advance for those who have certain feelings about math. I'll try to explain things as clearly as I can. At least I put pretty pictures of trees in there. The next slide, oh, yeah, so illegally removing trees before a development permit requires replacing half the total cross-section of the removed trees, or the financial equivalent. The math is shown in the bylaw, so I'm not going to go through explaining it, but just remember, pi R squared, you remember that? You know, radiuses are half of diameters, pi is a little bit over three. So, looking at an example, a twelve-inch diameter tree removes about one hundred and thirteen square inches of cross-section, and that would need to be replaced by half of that, or fifty-six and a half square inches, which could be done with a single eight-and-a-half inch diameter tree. But that's a very unlikely choice for a developer, since putting in large trees is so expensive and difficult. So a more likely scenario is putting in three-inch diameter trees. That's a standard for, for new tree planting, and eight of them have enough total cross-section to meet the requirements. If there's no room on the site or on an adjacent lot for these replacement trees, there'll be regulations calculating the cost of securing, planting, and maintaining the needed replacement trees. That money would go into the tree fund for purposes limited to tree assessments, tree surveys, or just planting and maintaining trees within town. So, next. So this bylaw is not a prohibition against removing trees. We do have some bylaws that do provide protections to trees, such as the wetlands, the wetlands laws, the earth-removal bylaw, street tree laws for streets that are right on, right, you know, right, right next to scenic ways, and now Article thirty-one, which we just passed, Habitat for All. And this is not, there have been conversations about other future bylaws that might require, for example, that lots maintain a tree buffer at the edges of their lots, but bylaws like that would require a lot more public outreach and research. Nothing's been settled either way about, other than starting to list the concerns and questions. This tree clearing bylaw seemed like a good place to start, since we've seen what happens without it, and so the Select Board recommends that Town Meeting members support Article thirty-three.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Having seen so much clear-cutting and removal of trees for new projects around town, ranging from Kelly's Corner to new subdivisions of new homes in the middle of established neighborhoods, this would seem like something we would all support, but none of these projects would have been impacted by this bylaw, as all had necessary site plans and permits. This article is similar to the previous article. It will set us down a slippery slope. It seeks to tell private property owners what we can and can't do on our own land. Should this article pass, some proponents will certainly seek to push, to further restrict property owners' rights. Cambridge has a bylaw that prohibits the removal of any tree greater than six inches in diameter. Enacting such a law would likely need, lead to the need to hire another arborist. This bylaw does not impact town finances yet, yet, but it does restrict property rights, and it would likely open the door to more restrictions. For these reasons, the Finance Committee does not recommend Article thirty-three.
Speaker at microphone three.
Yes, I am in support of this very much, and thank you for changing it to, the title to Tree Delay Bylaw. I see Protection Bylaw up there, but it really isn't a protection, because they're going to clear it anyways. But I want to confirm with Jim that this is, I have a comment afterwards, but first I want an answer to my question. This is only for developers, correct? It's not for the random guy that wants to take a tree down on his yard, correct?
Yes, that is exactly correct.
Right, and the random guy can take all his tree down, but if he wants to do a developer application, then he has to wait a couple of years, and so this is a deterrent as opposed to any kind of restriction. I believe that this is, some people might bring up the future thing people have been talking about, the Cape Cod bylaw, this has nothing to do with that. Is that correct?
Yes.
And for me, first of all, I'd like to say that ThinkCom, I really appreciate your work looking at fiscal impact, but it seems that sometimes you talk or think about and discuss the cost to property owners for something that isn't taxes, and then you say, well, we can't talk about something else because it isn't taxes. So I'd like to get a firm policy where ThinkCom looks at all costs, not just what goes in and out of Town Hall, or to not talk about anything, so to be consistent, anything that comes out of Town Hall. My last point is, for me, this is about, ah, how much time do I got? Great. So this is about people paying for what they took away from the community. The community gets the shade, the carbon absorption, the beauty of trees, and if people strip this land for a project that'll never get permitted, this bylaw will put a deterrent on, because the cost of replacing those trees will be very high, and I love your, I love math jokes, so thank you for that.
Microphone four.
David Black, Central Street. A question, I think, for Town Council. Among the, among the provisions mentioned in, in the text of the bylaw is the, is an escape clause, Chapter forty-B. Could a Chapter forty-B developer require or strongly incentivize the town to waive this bylaw if it made the resulting development uneconomic?
The timing of removing trees, which is all this affects, wouldn't provide an extra cost to a developer, because the cost of removing the trees before the permits and the cost of removing the trees after the permits is the same. So we don't think that an argument by a forty-B developer to bypass the bylaw would work. On the other hand, if they get their permits, they can remove the trees.
Okay.
Microphone one.
Ian Watkins, Strawberry Hill Road. I'm supportive of the proposal. I think an acre is quite generous as a limit. I think a half an acre, to me personally, would be, would be a better limit, but that's maybe, an acre's a good place to start. However, I think if we're talking about provisions for tree replacement, they should be on, pardon the joke, an apples-for-apples basis. I don't think it would be appropriate to cut down an acre of native trees and then replace half of them with, for example, non-indigenous pine trees. So maybe that's something that could be a consideration or a refinement down the line. Thanks.
Is there a question there? Did you want to answer to a question? Okay.
Microphone three.
Hello, I'm Susan Jick, fifteen Half Moon Hill. I am a co-president of Green Acton. Green Acton strongly supports a yes vote on this warrant article. This bylaw, if passed, would adopt a process that will ultimately result in better town regulation of tree clearings, including preventing developers from taking trees down before securing a permit from the town. Such regulation may result in fewer trees being removed from parcels. We also look forward to future initiatives on limiting clearing of trees of significant size or a vulnerable species. Such additional measures in the future will help address the current climate and biodiversity emergencies, because trees play a critical role in carbon sequestration and ecosystem preservation. Please vote yes on Article thirty-three. Thank you.
Microphone two.
Pardon me, Corinne Hogseth, Seminole Road. Just so people know, they're not talking about an acre, clearing, clearing an acre of land of trees. Forest is defined as. Forest is defined as an acre with canopy of 50% or more. Also, to answer a question that was answered, or to follow up on a question from earlier, you said that this was geared towards developers, but there's nothing in here that says that, that's not included in the, in the exceptions. This could apply to anybody with an acre of land.
Let me look up the relevant part of the bylaw, because I know it's here. Here it is. So if you're not, if you're not obtaining a permit, you can remove an acre of trees. So let's say I, I have a five-acre backland, and I decide that, you know, I want to take some trees out. You can do that. You can remove an acre. The, the only exception to that is if sometime in the 24 months after that, you do apply for a development permit, then you are subject to the bylaw. So if you remove an acre of trees, don't apply for a development permit for two years.
All right.
We do have an amendment that corrects an oversight in the wording of the article, or in the wording of the bylaw. Mr. Martin, and I believe you have it over there.
Yes, thank you. To correct an oversight in Article 33, I move to amend Section AF5, Exemption 5.2 of the proposed tree clearing bylaw, to add the Acton-Boxboro Regional School District, so that it reads, "Property owned by the federal government, the Commonwealth, the town of Acton, the Acton Water Supply District, or the Acton-Boxboro Regional School District."
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Yes, go ahead.
Two sentences. So it was just an oversight that was, that section was meant to exempt the governmental organizations that might be doing work in Acton, and the school district was overlooked.
Any further discussion on just correcting that small oversight? Would take a majority to pass, we'll just do that by voice vote? All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on, microphone one.
I just have a question on this. If I take an eight-and-a-half-inch tree down and decide to replace it with four three-inch trees, and I stick them right together, none of those trees are going to live. So I don't, I don't understand, if I were a developer and I was spiteful, I would take the trees down and stick 16 three-inch trees side by side. If I'm not mistaken, I don't see anything preventing that in here.
Let me look that up, too. I know we had, that would effectively be another tree removal, because if you are, right, if you, if, if, if an arborist declares that your methods are not going to, are going to be killing off the trees, that's effectively a removal. The other part about this that's missing is that there are, after these kinds of bylaws get passed, there are particular rules and regulations that get reviewed and passed as well. So that would be the kind of situation that'd be good to get reviewed into the rules and regulations. Same with the, you know, adding in inappropriate trees. That's, that's a perfect, a perfect example for, for rules and regulations.
Microphone three.
Jeff Mamlet, Gregory Lane. The presentation listed a number of local regulations covering regulation of trees. I just want to also point out that there is state law that governs here for large parts of the town, specifically Highway Department, Route 2, 111, 27, 2A. These are all state highways. Any tree removal within, I believe it's 300 feet of the median of a state highway must first be approved by the State Highway Department. And so I think there's a lot of precedent for this kind of regulation, and I think we're well within our rights as a town to approve it. Thank you.
Microphone four.
Nijan Dar, Runcliff Drive. What problem are we trying to solve? I mean, I don't see developers coming in without a permit and just wasting labor and time and money clear-cutting forests. Is this a big problem that we're solving?
Yeah. We first started talking about this bylaw when a developer had started applying for permits, and then clear-cut an area, and it was a great upset to the neighbors around there who had been told verbally that there would be, you know, trees remaining, but it was also, we realized, a flaw, a lack in our, in our, in our bylaw system. So simply requiring the wait until the end of permitting process seemed to be a simple adjustment, without adding any new permits or new requirements for reviewing.
I just want to make an observation, that we have four clocks in this room, and they're not working. So maybe for months or years, there's been, I don't know why we need four clocks, especially if they're not working.
Just FYI, this room is divisible for use by the school, so each quadrant has its own clock. And yes, I noticed that earlier. Write twice a day. Microphone two.
Victor San, Beverly Road. Well, it's not a question about this article, but it's a question about the parliamentary procedure. So is the motion to reconsider, can that be applied to an article that has been passed, or only articles that have been voted down?
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
So the parliamentary rules specify that there is a motion to reconsider, and can that be used for articles that have been passed, or only for articles that have failed?
A motion to reconsider can be either for a, an item that has passed, or one that has failed.
Okay, then when would be a good time to do that?
After we're done with this.
Okay, thank you.
It, it may be considered out of order, but we'll talk about that when the time comes. Back to microphone three.
John Yerich, Longridge Road. In general, I'm in favor for not clear-cutting large sections of land, but I did have a couple questions. Why half the square inches? Typically, when you're doing wetlands remediation, you actually have to replace wetlands back at two times what you're removing. So why is it that we're doing less than what's typically done for other environmental items?
I don't think I actually know the reason for that when it came out of the Planning Department, so can I, can I call a friend? Is there anybody there, a planner, who could say, oh gosh, here's why we decided on half? Oh, oh great, I have help.
So this actually came out of public comment. So we went to the Design Review Board, to the Select Board, to Conservation Commission, and I'm probably leaving one out, so I apologize, but it was really based off of public comment where that number came from.
Okay, so there's no scientific basis behind it? Okay. Next question I had is, you mentioned that it can be done on adjacent area if it cannot fit. Who define, who decides whether or not it cannot fit? Is that done through an official arborist, or a forester, or someone with some sort of credentials that is allowed to make that decision?
I'm going to say this, and I'm going to look in the direction of the Planning Director while I'm saying it, but that seems to be a matter for subsequent rules and regulations. Yes, so we will need to clarify exactly who gets to say, oh, I can fit it, or I can't fit it.
Okay. Next question, is there anything that, if I was a developer and I wanted to clear an area and not worry about getting permission, and I was buying the properties from someone else, I would say, hey, I will pay you extra money to clear the land before you sell it to me, therefore I'm not the one clearing the land and pulling the permit? Is there anything to prevent that?
Well, you would feel very bad about yourself, and that would prevent it. No. Is, is that another rules and regulations question, or is that a two-year look-back issue? Okay, so you would still have to wait the two years before you could pull development permits.
So it's two years regardless of who does the cutting?
Yes.
Okay. And then what cases has the town had where, that this bylaw change would have prevented? Do you have specific examples?
I wish I had the addresses offhand, but I remember at least two cases. So, yeah.
Did the permits fail? Did the permits fail?
No, the permits ended up going through.
Okay, so it would not have prevented anything?
No, but it's possible that in the permitting process, there would have been negotiations around trees, because that was something that had been said out loud by the developer to the neighbors, and, you know, there was no chance to, you know, make that a requirement of the permits, because they were already gone.
Okay, thank you.
Microphone two. Say that again.
Move the previous question.
It's been moved and seconded to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Article 32, adopt general bylaw leaf blower control, requires, no, I'm sorry. Woo! We're going back to the trees, not the leaves, the trees. Adopt new general bylaw, tree protection bylaw. Majority vote. Let's set the voting timer, please. As amended, wait. Oh, right, the correction, the, the, yes. As amended to add the school district. All right, voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The motion does pass. Question?
Is now a good time to do the motion to reconsider, or is that?
I am not going to allow that. I will call that out of order. The vast number of people who have left, any article that we've already acted on, would be unfair to them, their participation in this democratic process, by somebody waiting for, I mean, not, I'm not imputing a bad motive to you at all, but we took the vote in good faith with people who came specifically for an article, because clearly people have left regardless of the article they came for. I believe it is considered bad form to wait until the audience has drained, or the legislative body, which this is, has drained, to bring back a question that people were not given notice of.
So that's an, so that is not allowed?
It can, it officially can be done, but it is also my, my job in this position to determine whether I think that is a fair motion, and I think it is not fair. Thank you. Now, moving to Articles 37, 38, 39.
I move to take no action on 37 and 38.
There is a motion to take no action on Articles 37 and 38. Is there a second?
I just want to make an explanation, that this was sort of administrative misunderstanding, or rather, a policy change that could be fixed if we went back to the Select Board allowing petitioners to access Town Council for a quick three, four-minute review of petition language before you get the signatures. Otherwise, we have to submit multiple signatures for practically the same language, and so I urge you to ask your town officials to reinstate the policy that had been in effect for decades, to save money and time, and that's my reason for moving to pass over or take no action on 37, 38.
Which, as I am sure you have noticed, the next article after that is very similar. So we will take that one up.
It is sufficient, 39 is sufficient, thank you.
So all who are in favor of taking no action on Articles 37 and 38, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, Article 39. Ms. Leslie moves the article as printed in the warrant, citizen petition, citizens' library expenses. Three.
Ready?
There's a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Leslie.
Thank you. I'm June Leslie. The citizens' library is a wonderful legacy we want to protect. Next slide, please. The town is engaging in what some lawyers believe is unlawful and expensive actions, trying to limit the authority of the citizens' library trustees. On the left of this slide is what the deed and the law provides for. Citizens' library trustees making decisions regarding the citizens' library. On the right is what Article 11 seems to propose for Acton Memorial Library trustees to decide what happens at citizens' library. Next slide, please. In 2022, the town fired volunteers at the West Acton Citizens' Library and replaced them with paid staff, claiming that this would save money. It did not save money. Article 11 won't change that. Deciding what the trustees do is the job of state law and the voters who elect them. If the intent was for memorial library trustees to govern citizens' library, the deed would not require separately elected citizens' library trustees to govern the library. It's not clear what the problem is that Article 11 seeks to solve. A memorandum of agreement...
...you're talking about Article 11, not Article 39.
Same thing.
No, it's not.
The financial part of...
Article 11 has passed.
Yes, it's passed.
Stop saying Article 11.
Oh, you're, so, please clarify in your remarks.
I would continue with, a memorandum of agreement, or a joint set of equitable law bylaws, might solve this situation. Not only easier, but definitely more affordable. Next slide, please. The deed says the town is supposed to operate the said property in accordance with the purposes and under the name of the Citizens' Library Association of West Acton. Note that it says property, meaning the building. The purposes of the Citizens' Library Association were clearly laid out in its founding documents. The association officers transact the business of the library. The officers in 1962 became the elected citizens' library trustees. Those trustees went on to supervise renovations and oversee all business of the library. They were not...
Ms. Leslie, please. This is the same presentation that was given for Article 11?
Yes. It is.
Do you have different information than what was in Article 11?
Yes, I do.
Could we hear that, please?
Yes. The Supreme Judicial Court has reviewed similar attempts by municipalities to take over library operations. The SJC has said no. In Worcester, for example, the attempt was denied because deed of gift and the bequest constituted a public charitable trust. Upon their acceptance, the city... Upon their acceptance, the city bound itself to carry out their terms. In other words, the deed holds, and no takeover by the municipality. Next slide, please. Here is another example—condition of the deed. To discontinue, transfer, and/or sell the said property or any part thereof requires a four-fifths vote of Town Meeting. Friends of Citizens' Library and their attorney believe any part thereof means the authority of the elected trustees to transact the business of the library. Authority enrolls of publicly elected library trustees are laid out in one state law, MGL Chapter Seventy-eight. The founding—two, the founding documents of the association library; three, the Massachusetts Library Board of Commissioners trustee handbook; and four, the deed of gift case law. Documenting trustees' roles so that the trustees and town library staff can get along can be done without an expensive new court case, because existing laws and guidelines are so clear. Next slide, please. However, instead of using existing law—
Would you put the motion up and add her to the motion?
Could—we post the motion, please?
That's the motion? And— That's—the motion? What's printed in the warrant?
The article is what's printed in the warrant, and the motion—if—if the proponent chooses not to address what is in the warrant, the voters can decide.
But she can talk about it.
We'll have this discussion another time, Anne.[704.01][704.01](laughter) Pardon the interruption. Continue. Have you—have you concluded?
No. Documenting trustees' roles so that the trustees and town library staff can get along can be done without an expensive new court case, because existing laws and guidelines are so clear. Next slide, please. However, instead of using existing law, the town wants to use Article eleven to circumvent probate court, which has the authority over gift of deeds. That is unlawful. Next plaid sleeve. You may be tired of Citizens' Library governance matters. I hope you are also tired of the town spending money on it, but we want to know for sure. This petition is to see whether Town Meeting wants to authorize raising money for the legal fees and for the town efforts to control Citizens' Library trustees. I'm glad that the Select Board and the Finance Committee voted to recommend. All we want is for the town to respect the authority of the publicly elected library trustees to govern the library in a way the state law says—lays out and intends. Voters should decide if they are overreaching their authority, not the town. Please save town money for other important projects. By voting no on further funding, we can avoid this attempt at circumventing the deed and stay case law. The Friends of the Citizens' Library, a group working to protect the right of the Citizens' Library trustees to govern Citizens' Library, is serious about ensuring that the town follows the law. Even if Article eleven passes, it's important to know that if Town Meeting wants to pour more money into—you of your money into this black hole, let's not spend any more money on this matter. Please vote no on Article thirty-nine. Thank you.
To be clear, you have spoken for four-plus minutes on an article that you want us to vote no on.
I don't.
I didn't go there yet. You just said vote no, so you—you've proposed an article that you want us to vote no on. I just want to be clear.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
The Select Board recommendation.
Thank you. The Select Board views this article as problematic for a number of reasons, primarily because it is not actionable, but also because an appropriation article should include a dollar amount, and this article does not, and because the positive action asked of Town Meeting to appropriate funds for a negative outcome to restrict such funding is convoluted. As laid out in the Town Charter, the Town Manager, with oversight by the Select Board, directs the use of Town Council's services. Town Meeting's role is limited to the appropriation of funds, but all decisions about how those funds are allocated throughout the year are at the sole discretion of the Town Manager. The wording of the motion suggests that the town fund legal expenses relative to limiting the authority of the trustees of the library in West Acton, and the summary suggests that the town is attempting to control the roles of elected library trustees. This is wholly false. The town is pursuing a path that sets down the trustees' ability to define their own roles so far as the law permits. The Board unanimously approved the consensus recommendation from the Governance Advisory Committee that the Citizens' Library Board of Trustees be joined with the Trustee Board of Memorial Library to continue the governance of and advocacy for both of Acton's libraries, and Town Meeting, earlier approved—sorry—themselves to specify the functioning of the newly created Board. The Select Board has voted unanimously to not recommend this article. Furthermore, I'd like to point out that trustees cannot be considered "not property" when we are discussing the deed and the gift, and "property" when we are discussing their authority.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Our position is not based on the underlying issues presented, but rather on the fact that these articles are fundamentally confusing, incomplete, and not physically actionable. All th—all this article proposed legal expenditures but failed to specify any dollar amount, making it impossible for the Town Meeting to make an informed budgetary decision. From a financial oversight perspective, the lack of specificity and clarity renders these articles problematic. While styled as an appropriation article, their stated intent appears to be limiting or restricting the town's legal expenditures on a particular issue, something these articles are not legally able to do. As confirmed by Town Council, even if approved, these votes would not obligate or restrict the Town Manager's authority over legal spending or direction. Ultimately, these articles introduce ambiguity and risk without providing a clear or effective financial directive. For these reasons, we do not recommend this article.
So, before we get too much further, this is problematic, because it's not clear. The proponent gathered signatures for a thing and then spoke against it. To Town Meeting. I thi—Tara. I think the most appropriate action at this time—and I will suggest it, and if anybody wants to do it—would be to move to postpone indefinitely, because it is not clear what your vote means.
Point of order?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question for—a clarification question about—
A what question?
A clarification question of the intent.
Oh, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I read this. It sounds like the Friends of the Library is planning to challenge Article eleven in court, and that this motion—the effect of this motion would be to prevent the town from spending legal funds in defense of Article eleven.
No. No. I helped with this petition.
But the problem remains that the proponent spoke against her own article.
Changed your mind. We divided—we divided on the issue.
Tara, you're out of order. You're out of order.
But the petition was signed and put in.
Exactly. Oh, my God.
I'll recognize the speaker at microphone two.
I'd like to move to table this article indefinitely.
Second.
Oh, Emily Stuntz. I live at Twenty-Seven Central Street.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to—
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
A point of order. I think she may have mixed—missed—mixed up two words. She should either table it or postpone indefinitely. So, you suggested postpone indefinitely, but you can't table indefinitely.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Do you want—I—I moved to table the motion, then. Is that—
Postpone indefinitely.
Postpone indefinitely. I thought that's what I said.
Well, you kind of used some multiple different words.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I moved postpone indefinitely.
It's late. So, it has been moved and seconded to postpone indefinitely. That requires a majority vote to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. We are now moving to Article forty. Citizen petition to hold workshop, requires a majority vote to pass. Ms. Friedrichs moves the article as printed in the warrant. Is there a second? Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Friedrichs, to your motion.
Town has been planning a new traffic light at Hayward and Main. We knocked on doors within three hundred feet of this location and heard many objections. They said they wanted something done but weren't sure about a traffic light. We told them that neighbors at the Prospect-Main intersection faced a similar situation and asked the Select Board to present a few non-signalized options. The Select Board did just that, and neighbors chose one. So, we hope you will vote yes to ask the Select Board for the same accommodation as the Prospect-Main neighbors got. Next slide, please. One possible option is a mini roundabout. Recently, the Federal Highway Administration announced that they now recommend mini roundabouts over traffic lights, saying they're safer, easier, and cheaper for—better for the environment. Next slide. They say ninety feet of space is plenty of room, and there is ninety feet of space. Such a solution would not need more land or have to destroy neighbors' gardens. Next slide, please. They say mini roundabouts can be done with less land, allow traffic to flow better, be done more cheaply, and be safer than traffic lights. They say thirty percent safer. And they recommend multi-mini roundabouts in a row to mitigate traffic. Next slide. I'm not going to ask you to vote for a mini roundabout. That's just one possible solution. I'm asking you to vote yes to ask the Select Board to give non-signalized solutions one more look. Thank you.
Is there a recommendation from the Select Board?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Select Board held forums on the Main and Hayward intersection about five years ago. We also had a road safety audit of Hayward, Jefferson, and Musket, which some members of the public attended. There are a few residents that have objected to the traffic light. Some had concerns about traffic backing up on Route Two, or about people cutting across Jefferson to Musket to avoid the traffic light. These concerns were investigated by the engineering consultant. There isn't enough traffic volume to cause Main Street backups at all, and we heard from drivers that they cut across Jefferson now because Hayward Road backs up without a traffic light. The Select Board has tried to avoid adding traffic lights on Main Street. For example, traffic lights were proposed at both Main and Prospect and Acton Center, but the Board chose alternatives. However, safety issues at Main and Hayward, many related to nearby school campus, warrant a traffic light. A student was hit on a bicycle at this intersection in the crosswalk. Buses have to do a dance with Main Street in order to exit Hayward. Parents have contacted me, saying that their sixteen-year-old drivers have a problem negotiating a left turn out of Hayward. When we assessed accidents at the start of this process, there were fifteen accidents over four years, three with personal injury. After working on this for five years, we have upgraded this intersect—we—we have an upgrade of this intersection at hundred percent design. The new design interacts with other proposed road and sidewalk improvements on Main Street. We have the support of the immediate neighbors for the redesign. The intersection was last redesigned in two thousand nine, when it was planned to add a traffic light at that time, but the traffic light was canceled after the interstate—intersection reconstruction had completed. The resultant left turn lane without a traffic light made it even more dangerous to exit Hayward and allowed higher Main Street speeds. Residents have complained about this. Redesigning for a roundabout would involve significant encroachment onto a butter's property. Note that a roundabout is about twice as wide as the Main Street right-of-way. Plus, if we redesign again, the state won't help us. I've been told that the state will only help redesigning once. The Board understands that some would prefer not to have a traffic light there. In fact, some Board members would prefer not to have a traffic light there. But based on engineering and public input, the Board has decided to move forward with a traffic light as the best alternative. Reconstruction of this intersection is not proposed for this year. We still need to arrange funding, but the bottom line is that this is an unsafe intersection. The town had public input sessions when we decided to move forward. It'll cost more to redesign again, taking away money from other road safety improvements. The Select Board recommends against Article forty.
Finance Committee recommendation. Any comments from the Town Meeting members? Were you unable to hear that? The Finance Committee—the short version is the Finance Committee recommends the article. Speaker at microphone one.
Yes, hi. My name is Lauren Kaplan, and I live at One Hayward Road, which is directly between Hayward and Main Street. That's my driveway that butts directly out. And as is—as a resident of that area that just bought in two thousand twenty-two, I didn't really have a chance to vote on the work—on the plans or on anything involving this traffic light. I don't necessarily vote for—I'm not in favor of a roundabout or a mini roundabout, but I am in favor of using other alternatives, as opposed to putting in an invasive intrusive stoplight. You know, there's such things as stop signs or yield signs, things of that nature, I think that we could consider, as opposed to digging up the ground and—essentially, you know, removing people's property. I mean, the—the plans that I was handed last summer from Cory basically insinuate that my driveway is going to be used during construction, and that part of my property might not ever look the same from pur value, because that the trees and the shrubs weren't guaranteed to be protected.
Could you just hit the button? Whoops. Thank you. Microphone two.
John Peterson, Six Jackson Drive. I was involved in the public participation in two thousand and nine, and so from my recollection, at the end of that process, the redesign, which was primarily geometric, never involved a traffic light. I do think that the current priority, you know, which would spend money to put a traffic light at Hayward and Main, puts it up too high on the list relative to the other complete streets proposals, and I think that, you know, I agree very strongly with the Finance Committee that having another round of discussion has merit. So, I hope that people will vote in favor of this, and then the Select Board will take it to heart, and we'll have a further conversation. Thank you.
Microphone three.
Mark Grasha, three eighty-nine, Main Street. I'm not against the redesign by any means. No one in my household is. I—we do kind of feel like there maybe could be better options, and a workshop might not be a bad idea. During that small meeting we had, talking about the redesign, one of the things mentioned was reducing the speed limit. That didn't even seem like it was taken into consideration, like, whatsoever. So, I'm just curious, maybe during the workshop, we could present reducing the speed coming off of Route Two going into the center, where the center already is thirty miles per hour. That could help reduce the speed of traffic. I am also a stakeholder, because my land is going to be taken as well for this project, which I'm not really too happy about. I mean, I want the safety and well-being of all residents commuting and whatnot. But basically, I just—I just don't see any reason not to workshop it. When we were at that meeting, I did not feel that the residents were all in favor of the three options as presented, and again, I just think a workshop would be—would be helpful.
Microphone four.
You may have noticed in the warrant that the vote was extremely close on the Select Board. Two people voted against the notion of having a workshop, one person voted in favor of it, and two people abstained. So, just to represent some of that other point of view, to me, it does seem reasonable to— to explore this issue again. I think there's potentially new information about, for example, accident rates since the redesign that was done on the ground to, you know, reconfigure the angles. And they're, so, because this is a non-binding petition, I'm not too worried, one way or the other, of how town meeting votes, but it would still be helpful to note town meeting's opinion. And then the Select Board will continue to talk about the pros and cons of having a workshop like this.
Seeing no one standing, we'll go to a vote. Maybe we can try a 30-second? Just, just to, you know, because next year, we're going to be good at this. Okay, all who are in favor of the citizen petition to hold the workshop, vote aye, and all who are opposed, vote nay. Voting is open. Voting is closed. The motion clearly carries. Okay, we have one more article. I do just want to, once again, thank everyone for sticking it out for the duration here and taking part in this important part of our town government. And I will now turn it back to, oh, I'll begin the motion. Article 41, Citizen Petition to Conduct Impact Study Requires Majority Vote. Ms. Friedrichs Moves the Article as Printed in the Warrant. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded to your motion.
Thank you. May I have slides? Oh, great. Thank you so much for...
I don't want to.
I'm not going to, Lisa. I'm not going to.
I'm busy. Impact studies tell voters before they vote what the impact is expected to be for a proposed zoning change. Next slide. Generally, impact studies look at multiple scenarios, including a worst-case scenario. Such studies tell voters what the expected risks are of good or bad scenarios, and if any unintended consequences could occur with a worst-case scenario. Next slide. Here are some options to include in an impact study. Taxes, town staff, infrastructure, schools, water, cost of open space, recreation land, traffic, safety, loss of existing small affordable houses, and I'll add the impact of evicting people because the developers are going to get rid of small houses, like it's probably going to happen on 31. Net carbon footprint. Next slide. Are zoning impacts affordable? Yes. Tens of thousands of dollars, not hundreds. The cost is very small compared to the cost of making zoning mistakes. Many towns require proponents to do zoning impact studies before they can be voted on. Next slide. It's important for an impact study to include a town-specific information, especially the most important number, the number of school-aged children per household. For the record, no, I did not use all children. I used 18 and below, and then I subtracted 5 and below. Here is a recent impact study from Weston, where they say that in scenarios where there are more than 0.52 children per household, that it's a net fiscal negative for the town. Acton is 0.64. Now, if we did an impact study, we could actually take the data from the schools to see how many from public schools. But again, you'd have to do that, like, I hope that we do more planning and that we actually have this data before the next big zoning thing. Thank you. Select Board Recommendation?
The majority of the Select Board voted to not recommend this article, this citizen's petition. We felt that there is a lack of specificity of exactly what sort of impact studies would be required. We're also very concerned about having dueling impact studies and endless, and endless challenges from people who were not content with this sort of impact studies that might be done. So we do not feel it's a good investment, and we will not recommend it.
Finance Committee Recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends Article 41, bearing in mind that it is non-binding. The Finance Committee would appreciate having Acton-specific fiscal impact information when considering any major change to town zoning bylaws.
Speaker at microphone three.
I'm going to speak in favor. This is the first I heard of this, but I didn't realize we didn't do impact studies on zoning law. And I'm reminded of my time in Newton, where we've had, we had major impacts on school spending, for example, when various new developments came in, and that nobody actually put that on the table before approval, before zoning changes. And I'm also reminded of what we just went through in North Acton with the McGovern Auto Dealership, where after the whole permitting process, which was granted by Wright, we put through a zoning change, that any second auto dealership there would require a special permit. And I think, you know, understanding what zoning means in different places and what a zoning change will do is very important. And I think that just should be part of the zoning process. So I would support this.
Microphone two.
I think most of the major zone, or all of the major zoning proposals that I'm aware of that have happened in the last few years have had significant studies done. Now, the proponent may not believe that those studies represent all of the impacts that they would like to see studied, but I would also point out that discriminating against families with children is illegal in this state. And the implication of some, a part of the presentation was that we should, we should structure our zoning so that we don't, we don't welcome families with children, because that would have a negative fiscal impact. If Attorney General Andrea Campbell hears that we're deciding things on that basis, I think we may face a lawsuit. So I would recommend against this article, which I think is just designed to obstruct action that can make progress for the town.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Dan Buckley, Independence Road. Do we have any idea how much this study would cost? I mean, is it open book?
We'll take an answer. Wait till you get to the mic, so everyone can hear.
Most of these studies are paid by grants from MAPC. They use all the same consultants, they use the same models, and they just stuff Acton specific data in. They're pretty cheap. Thank you. $10,000, something like that, but the cost of making a mistake is high. That's why Weston did it. I mean, there's a long list of towns that do it. Virtually every town that did MBTA zoning did some kind of impact study. Thank you.
We have the remote participant.
Did I finish? I just follow-up on her follow-up? She didn't answer my, I have a follow-up for her answer.
Oh, we'll, in one, one second. Go ahead. Whoops, I don't think we, I saw your mouth going, but we don't hear you.
My mic is on.
Perfect, now we hear you.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Tris Wendell from Laurelport. I had brought this up earlier, questioning about impact studies for, you know, zoning and such. I think, I don't know if this is the correct way of, I've never done this before, but maybe you can answer this for me. I would like to see some sort of amendment that goes into these developers or zoning that would somehow require a developer to take on the impact of doing a review of all of the resources and infrastructure and to ensure that the availability of water, sewer, electricity, all those other things I spoke of earlier, will be addressed in the planning phases of a project. Because I think that that would enable the town to have a better handle on, if there's going to be an issue at some point. I know that there are in other states. Currently, there were sizable developments that were put in. One year later, the residents don't have water. So I'm very concerned about what we have here in terms of water and utilities and such. I'm not opposed to development, if it's done right and correctly. I'm a big proponent of measure twice, cut once kind of theory. So anyway, I think that having an impact study, I agree with the Financial Board, too, that it's kind of critical to really evaluate these things. But I also have an understanding that if you get a lot of chefs in the kitchen, it can become a nightmare. But I do think it's necessary, given the economic environment that we're in and where the costs are likely going to be exceeding. Thank you.
I think we may have a response to that question at microphone four. Am I correct? That there could be a, not, not from, not from you, from the planner, planning chair? Do you have a response to the, or does somebody have a response to that question? And then we'll go back to the, the previous question. Okay, I was mistaken. Go ahead.
I can answer both questions. The cost of the studies are how much you put into it. If you want carbon footprint, you know, if you want schools, if you want water, it depends. Most of the fiscal impact studies that I've reviewed have been just cost on fiscal impact. So, thank you.
If, if, if the...
At microphone four, go ahead.
The follow-up here, if the funding is for this study is coming from the state and not from the town, and all we have to do is request from the Board of Selectmen, can we do a study, as long as it's paid from the state? Why are we doing this here? Why do we need to do it with the town meeting instead of just going directly to the Board of Selectmen?
Because a legislator who is among us has exercised their right to bring this in front of the legislature.
This is just a non-binding resolution to suggest to the town that they do impact studies. It doesn't cost anything. This is just a, do we feel like it's a good idea? Does that answer the question? It's not...
Let's, let's move on. Microphone one.
The Finance Committee has, in fact, been asking for these impact studies, specifically came up with the MBTA zoning, and we are not getting the answers that we are asking for around this. I think it is, think of a different way to say this. It doesn't need to limit affordable housing to know what our water supply is. It allows us to plan for the future. We are in a problem now where we don't know how much longer our current water supply will last. We're looking at whether we need to connect over to the metropolitan water supply. That takes planning. Impact studies don't inherently stop something from happening. They give us the information we need to intelligently move forward. There has been, as I said, hesitancy to get planning, impact studies. Other towns do them. This is clearly not asking for a huge lift.
Microphone three.
Thank you. Alyssa Nickel. I am here at a pro microphone, but only because it was the shortest line. I actually abstained from the Select Board vote. I was one of the two votes, so I don't have any objection to impact studies. I'm sorry, I'm hearing an echo. Okay. So, one of the major zoning proposals that we just passed tonight was Article 31, the open space residential development. There was a lot of study that went into this. There was a fair housing analysis. RHSO did. We also hired JM Goldson to look at the economic feasibility. I have been told that MAPC no longer does these fiscal impact analyses, so I'm not sure what other grant opportunities there are, but it could be a cost to the town. I do want to point out a couple of things, little information tidbits for you to consider. 10 years ago, Acton was drawing 1.7 million gallons per day out of our Aquifer. We're allowed 1.9 million gallons per day. Today, 10 years later, with all of the development that's happened over that 10 years, we're currently drawing 1.4 million gallons per day. So we've actually reduced our water usage, thanks to the wonderful water conservation efforts of all the folks who live in town. I also want to address this school-aged children. First of all, it is still illegal to discriminate based on familial status. I hope that Acton doesn't venture down that road. I looked for the data when I saw that 0.64 number, because it's ridiculously high. We have, in Acton, don't forget, Boxborough is a town that sends students to the AB District. We have 4,228 K-12 students enrolled in 23, 24. That's the data that's available. We have, at the same year, 9,085 households. That gives us a school, sorry, student SAC of 0.47, not 0.64. The Weston fiscal impact analysis was noted. The actual number for the multifamily housing was 0.24.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Microphone four.
Jim Coleman, Nash Road. I believe this similar petition was here last year, and it's just as useless this year as it was then. It says it in its own summary, that building could be affordable, it may result in less of a carbon footprint, we just don't know. So you'll never know what's actually going to be built, so the time for an impact study is when a proposal is actually made, not when the zoning is put in place. Because we just don't know. We don't know if they're going to be multifamily, single family, who knows? So it really doesn't get anybody anywhere that they think they'll, they will think they know what the impact is, but in fact, they really won't. Thank you.
Microphone two.
Julian Pointer, Avalon Drive. I'm concerned about the vagueness here. It's really not clear what would have to be included, and I'm worried that we might get to a point where there's an acceptable delay to do some sort of study, at which point somebody would challenge that the study was not thorough enough, and we go through cycle after cycle, and it prevents anything from getting done. So I agree with the Select Board's concerns on specificity, and I don't recommend this.
Microphone one.
Ian Watkins, Strawberry Hill. I think the town meeting was on May the 6th. As we're coming perilously close to May the 7th, would it be possible to move to a vote on this, please?
It has been moved and seconded. Let's use the clickers on a 30-second. Oh, moved and seconded to cut off debate. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we will. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The motion fails.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move to dissolve this town meeting.
Do I, all who are in favor of dissolving the meeting? Thank you once again for sticking it out. See you next time. See you next time.